All right. Good evening, Placerville. Welcome to the City Council meeting. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Regina, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Borelli?
Here.
Councilmember No?
Here.
Councilmember Thomas?
Here.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Here.
Mayor Taylor?
Here.
Thank you.
We will move on now to our ceremonial matters tonight, starting with item 3.1, introduction of accelerant K-9 dog Denali with her handler, Captain Preston. And Chief Cordero, you have this.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Council and Placerville residents that are present. It's my honor to introduce to you this evening one of our, I would say, our newest members, but she's got a couple of new hires that have come in after her, so she's got some seniority on the rest of the group now. But our new accelerant K-9, which is Denali, along with her handler, Captain Preston. And Captain Preston, I've asked him to give us just a little brief overview of kind of her capabilities and what she brings to not only our department, but the citizens that we serve and protect. And before I do that, I just want to acknowledge, you know, as Chief Friend will know with his K-9 handlers, with the PD and the fire side of things, we need to acknowledge the effort that the handlers put into this. While the dog needs to be trained and certified, the dog does stay with Captain Preston 24/7, so it is really a huge commitment on their part to take this on, to provide this service to the citizens that we protect, and it's an absolute asset to our agency. So without any taking more time, I'll introduce Captain Preston and Denali.
Thank you.
She's always searching. Good evening. Like Chief Cordero said, I'm Captain Preston. I've been with Eldorado County for a total of about 22 years, the last 15 as a full-time firefighter medic, engineer medic, captain medic. I've been an investigator with the department for, involved with investigations for about the last 14, 15, 16 years like that. I'm one of our arson investigators, and Denali is basically another tool in the toolbox. She is almost three years old, should be three in October. She spent eight weeks training prior to me getting there. So she was trained by Pacific Coast K-9 in Bellingham, Washington. She had eight weeks of accelerant training before I got there. We did a two-week handler class together, and we've been back since the middle of May, right around May 15. She's deployed out on three fires with me so far, where she's been able to help me out in more of training. It wasn't a suspected arson-type situation, but anytime I can get her out on a fire and get her working, it's good training. Two of those fires were actually within the city. And we do, inside the city limits, Eldorado County is responsible for not only the structured fire investigations, but also the wildland fire investigations. So she's trained to alert on 12 different accelerants right now, both what we call pre and post. So pre would be if you take gasoline, dump it on the ground, she's going to smell it. Post would be post-burn or post-fire. So if I dumped gasoline on the ground, threw a match into it and let it burn off to where it completely went out a half an hour later, and this is actually in part of the certification we went through, a half an hour later, an hour later, she'd come in and she'd alert to where that gasoline was. So the criminals that are trying to get away with lighting fires with, you know, accelerants and thinking that it's just going to all burn up, Denali's going to teach them a little something different. We have to do... Hey, leave it. She's always searching. She is a food reward dog, so she's not like a police K-9 where, you know, they're very aggressive and they do the biting and stuff like that. In the two weeks we're up there, she did go through some training to protect me, so if she feels that there's a threat to me, she may lick you to death. They had a hard time getting her to bite onto a sleeve when someone was attacking me. She did do it a couple times, but she's very docile and just likes to have fun. The PD and Sheriff's Office dogs, where they do the biting and stuff like that, they're what they call an aggressive alert. So sometimes they're aggressive, sometimes they're passive. They'll sit if they're like searching for narcotics or something like that, that's what she does. If she finds an accelerant, her indication to me is a change of behavior, and then she'll sit, and then she gets rewarded with treats. She loves the bacon-flavored little treats, so we're going to just stick with that. A lot of the narcotics dogs, bomb dogs, believe it or not, they use a tennis ball as a reward. I chose to not do the tennis ball and go with a food reward because if we're in a fire scene and she alerts, and then I throw a tennis ball and she goes crazy after it, well, there goes my evidence. So we went with the food reward. It's a little challenging because when she's at the station with me, she's always looking around for food. She's very food-driven. The guys eat lunch, and she wants to see what they're eating. There's a lot of rules with her, they can play with her and everything else, but there's no feeding her. So the only time she gets fed is when I feed her morning and night, and then when she gets her rewards for doing her work. We do every tour, so we work a two-day-on, four-day-off schedule. So basically, once a week, we're doing four hours of training, and that's to meet a 200-hour minimum for the year so that we can recertify. So next May, we'll have to go back to certification, and her and I'll have to go through what's called a handler certification or handler team certification. And what that entails is there'll be what we call double-blind hides. So someone will... Leave it. Someone will hide gasoline, kerosene, lighter fluid, whatever she's trained on, they'll hide it in different areas to where she won't know where it's at and I won't know where it's at, so it's blind to both of us. And then we'll have to go through, and we'll have to do the certification, and I'll have to say, okay, this is where she's alerting, this is where I would take my sample. And there are seven of those you have to do, and a minimum of four without any false indications. So a little bit of work, but it's fun. I think all the guys would agree that having a dog at the firehouse is the right thing to do. They all want one at every house, but they all don't want to take them home at the end of the tour and have the responsibility. So she comes to work with me when I come to work. When I go home, she goes home. I've got two other labs at home, and they're just all, actually, all the same age. My other two will be three in December. And they're just... She's a totally different dog at home. She's just a normal dog, running, chasing, playing in the pool, playing in the hose, can't get her out of the water, typical lab. So that's kind of Denali, myself, and our capabilities in a nutshell. Any questions?
Are there any questions for Captain Preston? Nope. Thank you so much for teaching the community about the capabilities of Eldorado Fire and introducing us to accelerant. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Yep. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? If so, please jump up. And, all right, seeing none, I'll close public comment. And we will move on to item 3.2. And this is a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Placerville declaring September 2022 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. And I will go ahead and read this proclamation. And then Regina, could you introduce the person that's going to be here to accept the proclamation tonight?
Sure, Madam Mayor. We have prostate cancer advocate, Richard Montgomery, present to accept the proclamation.
All right. And feel free to, if you, you're welcome to step up now, or if you want to take a seat while I read it and then come up to the podium. All right. Whereas prostate cancer is the most frequently diagnosed cancer in men and the second-leading cause of cancer death in men, and one in eight men have a lifetime probability of developing prostate cancer, and one in eight women also have a lifetime probability of developing breast cancer. And whereas the American Cancer Society estimates there will be 268,490 new cases of prostate cancer in the USA in 2022, resulting in an estimated 34,500 deaths. And whereas it is estimated 26,890 men in California will be diagnosed with prostate cancer this year, and it is estimated 4,130 California men will die from this disease this year. And whereas the incidence of prostate cancer is almost 73% higher in non-Hispanic black men than in non-Hispanic white men for reasons that remain unclear. And whereas prostate cancer death rates declined in the mid-1990s to mid-2021 due to earlier detection through PSA testing and advances in treatment. And the five-year survival rate approaches 100% when prostate cancer is diagnosed and treated early, but drops to 31% when it spreads to other parts of the body. And whereas risk factors for prostate cancer are increasing age, African ancestry, a family history of the disease, and certain inherited genetic conditions. And the American Cancer Society recommends that men have a conversation with their health care provider and make an informed decision about whether to be tested for prostate cancer. And whereas the City of Placerville joins communities across our nation to increase the awareness about the importance for men to make an informed decision with their health care provider about early detection and testing for prostate cancer. Now therefore be it resolved, I Kara Taylor, Mayor of the City of Placerville, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2022 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Placerville. All right, Richard, I'd like to invite you up to the podium to say a few words, and then I'll come down and present the proclamation to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, and a special thanks for Regina, who puts this together every year for us. There's not a lot to say beyond all the wherases, but I'll make it a little more personal. I was diagnosed and treated about 25 years ago. 25 years ago, you didn't have a lot of choices on what to do. Radiation was kind of in infancy. Brachytherapy or seed implants was a new thing. So it was kind of like you did a radical prostatectomy. So it was called, they took it out. So it's a little bit different these days. You have a lot of choices of types of treatment. Beyond that, the biggest issue is men just need to get tested. It's a simple blood test when you do the physical. It's not an extra expense, it's not a whole lot of blood, it's a little tiny vial, and that's the only real test we have. It's not perfect, but it's what we got. So 25 years ago, if you had a PSA, which is the test, if you were somewhere near four, they got concerned, and they wanted to do a biopsy. Biopsy is definitely not fun. These days, they don't get too alarmed until it gets, PSA hits maybe 10, and then they want to do a biopsy. The good news is there's some new things out now that hopefully they can do tests and a man can avoid a biopsy. So what happens if you've gone through it and they don't find it? In my case, I think I ended up having three biopsies, even though my PSA was kind of moving along. Finally found somebody that got it and found it. So then I had to go through this, what do I do about treatment? So there weren't a lot of things you, as I said, had a choice for. So I opted to have it removed. So I basically have been cancer-free for 25 years. It doesn't work that way for a lot of guys, unfortunately. I don't say I'm cured, some doctors like to use that word. I'd like to think more like I'm in remission because I've had patients in my group, I chair the Cameron Park Support Group, that have been recurred, say, after five years, 10, 10 years, and 15 years. So it's not a precise science to get this sucker handled. But there are a lot of things that they can do these days. I've got people I've worked with now for eight and 10 years that have gone through all kinds of treatments. They're still kicking. So my words are, men get tested, wives take the guy down and make him do it. So he has a good chance of getting past all this without all the other treatments and things you go through for years on end. Thank you very much again for doing this.
Thank you, Richard, for being here tonight. And I'll walk down and present this proclamation to you. While I do that, if there's any comments that the council would like to make, please go for it.
I'll make a quick comment. I recently went to my doctor's appointment, and the nurse walked in the room, set down a tube of petroleum jelly, and a glove. And that was their idea of a joke. And so needless to say, the doctor informed me that that's not exactly how they do it anymore, but they got a good laugh out of it. So just to keep in mind, it is a blood test now. It's not the old way that they used to do it with a glove and some lubricant. So keep in mind that that is, it's an easy thing to do, and it's, and go do it, and do it soon. And even with the pandemic, a lot of people have skipped getting their testing, and it's, a lot of things are showing up in the medical field now that are delayed, delayed, what would you call it? Delayed diagnosis because of COVID. So if you've delayed for those reasons, go and see a doctor, go out and do it. So thank you.
Great comments.
I just would like to say thank you again. You've come here so many years, I'm just, you've become a familiar face in sharing your story and the outcome, and I'm really happy for you that this is your outcome. And I think with your warnings and encouragement that there will be a lot more, successful cases like yours. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to invite members of the public up to the podium if they wish to speak on item 3.2. All right, seeing none, we will move on to the closed-session report. City Attorney Ibrahim.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. There were two items on closed session tonight. The first was a performance review of the city attorney. That discussion was deferred to the next City Council meeting. The council also spoke on real property negotiations, specifically the price and terms for three city properties located on Main Street. The council provided direction to staff. If and when an agreement comes before the council, it will be in open session, and the public will have an opportunity to comment on that.
Thank you, Mona. Item five, adoption of the agenda.
Remove for adoption.
All right, we have a first and a second. Regina, roll call, please.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We will move on to 6.1, brief comments by the City Council, and I'll start with Jackie tonight. No comments? Michael?
No comments tonight, thank you.
Patty?
I don't have anything.
Oh, wow. Dennis?
Is it just me? Well, it might not be. I went to Farm to Fork up in Camino, and they put on a really good show. I don't, dinner and such, we took our family. I would encourage you to go, but I don't want you to because the tickets sell out really quick, and it's a great event. It really highlights all that our, all that our county has the offer in food, and it was catered by John. Motown Gil.
Sounded yummy.
It was great. It was great, good entertainment. Well, there's a lot of good food. There wasn't no entertainment, but entertainment was all the people and friends that you got to meet up there. A lot of different folks that I don't normally see down here in this area, so it was nice to see a lot of different faces, and it was a great deal up there. Went to the Board of Supervisors meeting today, and I'm not going to belabor this because it's probably a conversation for many other days to come. It was an unfortunate day where our supervisors could not get more than a 3-2 vote to support moving our homeless programs together forward in one way or another. And so more to come on that. I'm sure that the world's going to take a few turns, and we're going to be starting to reevaluate where we go from here. With that, I'm done, thank you.
All right. I want to highlight that Tript to Green, the second weekend, is coming up, Labor Day weekend, so, which is not this weekend, but the next weekend. This is our second week, weekend of this pilot project, pilot study, where we turn all the lights green on Highway 50 from 8:00 in the morning till 8:00 at night. And it will be for the whole three days of Labor Day weekend, so Saturday, Sunday, and Monday. We, there were a couple lessons learned from the first weekend. We expect better signage on, for Main Street, for those coming down Apple Hill, and some better access for a couple of the affected neighborhoods. But, and we are collecting community feedback as well, so if you have any feedback after this weekend, there is also the first weekend in October. Please provide that to the Tript to Green. Do you want to just mention, Rebecca, the email address for feedback, community feedback?
Sure. Folks can provide comments to US50TriptToGreen, all one word, at gmail.com.
Okay, thank you. I also want to mention that the goats in the city that are doing vegetation management have been very busy, and they were across from my house unexpectedly, which they are working really hard, and they get a lot of wounds down. It was, it's cool. My kids were really excited to wake up to goats across the street.
When I drove by, I thought, oh, my gosh, they're going to have a front row seat.
Yeah, and it really slowed traffic down on that road, which, you know, something we might want to consider. And then Michael and I attended a meeting with the wagon train organizers as well to talk about next year. It was a good meeting. And then I've had a couple other meetings. And also just want to mention, with the Board of Supervisor meeting tonight, it was certainly a disappointing result to see this project that everyone's been working very hard on kind of come to a major stall. I do just want to say that I don't think right now is the time to close doors, and I, I know that everybody that's been working on this is working with good intentions, trying to do what they think is right. So trying to, trying to stay optimistic about the next steps that may happen, but also still just trying to process what this all means. So with that, we will move on to item seven, the Consent Calendar. All matters listed under the Consent Calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion, by roll call vote, unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. I will go ahead and open this up to the public. If anyone would like to speak on the Consent Calendar, item seven, please step up to the podium.
Sue Rodman, Major Agent, Major L Committee meeting, or Committee Member. Item 7.6, the roof and cooling system for the aeration blower building at the water treatment plant. And my comment is this, having a water treatment plant that functions requires maintenance. The report makes it clear that this work is overdue, so don't wait any longer. Get it done now.
Thank you, Sue.
Nicole Gopperd, Placerville resident. I just wanted to make a brief comment on item 7.5. I highly support moving forward with that project of the Broadway sidewalks. I think making our city more walkable and pedestrian-friendly and safer for people to walk will help with traffic. It'll also really help our local businesses when people can walk to the business around the corner rather than get in their car when they might then drive down the hill otherwise. So thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. All right, seeing no other comments, we'll bring it back to the council for a motion.
I got a quick comment, thank you.
Okay.
I'm going to need to recuse myself on item 7.5, but I will be voting on all other items when I vote.
Okay.
Because, oh, the reason for the recusal is I have property within the project, scope of this project.
Okay, thank you, Dennis.
I'll make a motion to move the Consent Calendar.
Second, with the exception of number, Dennis recusing himself on...
All right, so we have a first and a second.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye, except for 7.5.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Regina. All right, item eight, this is public comment for any items that are not on the agenda. At this time, members of the public may speak on any item that they wish to for three minutes. We appreciate it if you state your name for the record when you come up to the podium. And if you would like anyone to get back to you, there are cards on the back. Correct, Regina? Do we have those cards? Okay. So you can fill out the card on the back with your contact information and your topic, and either staff or a council member will get back to you. With that, is our clock working today?
Yes.
It is? Okay, I'm glad to hear that. Thank you. All right, so with that, we'll go ahead and open this up. Please step up to the podium if you wish to speak.
Again, Sue Rodman, Placerville resident and member of the Placerville Fire Safe Council. There was some much-needed brush cutting done on Lower Main three or more weeks ago, but it's been left to dry out and become ever more flammable since then. The job needs to be finished, and the piled and cut-out, dried-out vegetation needs to be cleaned up.
Thank you, Sue.
Good evening, Kathy Lishman, Placerville resident. I have a question, and it is about something on the agenda, but I don't know if I can ask this, but I will anyway. Under closed session for item two, is the city looking at selling the building, or is it a lease that you're working on? Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Good evening. My name is Tim Favoloro. I'm a field rep for the Norcal Carpenters Union, and tonight I just wanted to talk about labor standards. Much of the work that comes through these chambers has to do with construction projects, much like the affordable housing projects later on the agenda tonight. We hear a lot of voices, a lot of ideas, and one thing I hear very little about is the workers on these projects and the benefits and wages they get. You may not know it, but the construction industry is a little bit like the Wild West out there. I see it every day. There's a lot of irresponsible contractors, a lot of abuses happening. Workers getting paid pitiful wages, $15, $20 an hour with no benefits, work to the bone, 10, 12 hours a day on the nights, weekends, no overtime, they get misclassified, they're getting paid under the table, they're traveling two hours to work each way in some cases. It wears them out, and it wears out their families, you know? Workers are destroying their bodies, and they have no health care for themselves or their families. They're getting pigeonholed with a few simple tasks, and it's very difficult for some of them to climb the ladder. So we think that something needs to be done to ensure that these workers have the opportunities that they deserve. We need to be thinking about policies that can make that happen. First, apprenticeship. We need to ensure that contractors participate in state-accredited apprenticeship programs. These programs provide alternatives to college for the poor and working-class members of our community. They pull people out of poverty and give them marketable skills that they can turn into a career. Also, it sets standards for quality construction, establishing a high-skilled, highly skilled workforce. Also, prevailing wages, setting construction wages[1746.62] Also, prevailing wages, setting construction wages to the standards set by collective bargaining lifts up all workers. Many people in this room could understand the benefits of good pay. Workers can buy homes, maintain their vehicles, raise their families, and send their kids to school. Why wouldn't we want folks who build our homes to not be paid well? Third, local hire. This allows workers to live where they work, reduces strain on infrastructure, and reduces greenhouse gases. No more driving two hours to work. And along with good wages, we can help build a diverse community. And finally, healthcare. A surprising amount of construction workers in California have terrible healthcare. They pay high premiums, and it's out-of-pocket often. Over a quarter of construction workers have zero healthcare coverage. That's more than twice the state average. Nearly half of construction workers in the state of California depend on public assistance. It's a very dangerous industry, and it's absolutely essential that these workers get the care that they need. So I just wanted to leave you with a question. What can this city council do to ensure that construction workers who build in Placerville get a fair shake? It's time to start thinking about your role as guardians of the workforce, and what sort of policies would you support to ensure high labor standards and worker protections for the construction workers of Placerville? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, Sue Taylor. I just want to appreciate your efforts on Trip to Green. As the president of the Placerville Downtown Association, Kara came and met with the organization and gave a lot of really good information. I'm probably your, would have been your most biggest cynic, you know, when this project came forward, and I appreciated all the information that was given, and I think it is, and people need to understand that this is gathering data for dealing with the city congestion during the future high-traffic times. So I appreciate also your effort to fix the things that were a little hiccup and, and reaching out. And so, and people need to know, this is much better than a flyover where you're going to have to tear out buildings to make that possible, and, and I do appreciate the city coming up with an alternative to look at for those times when it gets backed up too much. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sue. All right, I see nobody else stepping up, so I will close public comment and move on to item 8.2, written communication. Regina, would you like to address written communication?
Certainly, Madam Mayor. There were no items of written communication received for any non-agenda items, however, there were several received for item 12.4, and I have provided hard copies on the black, back table for the public, and copies for yourselves as well.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we have nothing under item nine, 10, and 11 tonight on the agenda, so we will move right on to item 12, discussion and action items. Starting with 12.1, this is to consider a contract with Bold Communications, Inc., Emily Idelman, to provide social media outreach services for the city of Placerville. And City Manager Morris has the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Over the past couple of years, staff and council have had discussions regarding social media outreach and how to better communicate with the public. Staff has done minimal work in terms of social media outreach due to staffing issues, both in terms of knowledge in that area and, and time constraints. The police department does a very good job, I believe. They have a better outreach program that they do through social media. Recreation also does some reach outreach primarily through their program and through email because they have people that sign up for recreation programs, and so they use that as a method to communicate with, with the public that is interested in, in what they're doing in their recreation programs. However, the main source of what we have looked at and, and have concerns with is getting out correct information to the public that comes to us at City Hall in terms of different programs the council is approving, approving, and working on, different projects, et cetera, and how can we can do a better job with that. Recently, staff contacted a local vendor called Bold Communications that performs social media outreach, and based on those discussions, we developed a scope of work and potential contract to assist us in the area of social media outreach. That contract and the description of services is attached to your agenda tonight. Staff is excited to, to test this program and see what we can do to better communicate with our public, provide information regarding what is going on. Examples of that would be, for example, after a city council meeting, we could put out a, a basic review of what, what we approved and the things that we looked at during that council meeting. A basic newsletter type that we have done a little bit of over the last year, but not on a consistent basis. We would like to become consistent with that. This new group, Bold Communications, would help us in creating that content, so it frees up staff time and, and having to worry about do that. We would provide some of the details and then let that person prepare, Bold Communications, prepare the content, and then post it to several social media outlets. We will increase our social media outlets through this process. Currently, we have a Facebook page, we have our website, and that's basically all we are actively using at City Hall. We have used a program called Constant Contact to get out our newsletters that we've done on a fairly regular basis, but we want to improve that also and do that on a regular, more, more regular basis for the future. The total cost for this would be $2,600 per month for the service. This includes both creating those posts and putting those out, but also monitoring social media and alerting the city to hot topics that come up on social media that we think that we need to get information out, that maybe incorrect information is out there or insufficient information is out there, that we can provide more factual and correct information to the public so that they can react to that. So we believe that it, it does provide a valuable service, like I say, in terms of monitoring the social media channels and, and referring the information back to the city, and then being able to create that, the, the posts and the outreach to the public to correct information and to provide good information to the public. With that, I am happy to answer any questions you have, and we'll go from there, so.
All right. Thank you, Cleve. Questions for Cleve?
Do, do any of these efforts that we're looking at here cross over with what the chamber has been doing?
Yeah, I probably should mention that we, as you know, we entered into a contract with the chamber, I believe around November 1st of that year, last year, I've been talking to the chamber about that. And they have been do, have, have been marketing the city since that time. You know, they've created content in terms of videos that they put out over social media, pictures, et cetera, and they also put out information about events, things to do in, in Placerville, et cetera. So they've, they've been doing that. And at the end of September, your second meeting in September, they will be coming back to do a presentation to you to develop and let you know what they have done and the success of that program, and also at that time, present a request to you in terms of considering continuing that contract for another year and moving forward with it. I believe that there could be some overlap with that. They have different purposes. I know in this contract, it calls it social media marketing slash outreach. I like to think of this as social media outreach, not, not necessarily marketing. The program that the chamber is doing is a marketing program for the city. That is all they do. They don't get into the, the other projects and programs that we are doing. And so there is a difference there. There is some overlap, however, I would assume that if we have events that we're doing, that both the chamber and perhaps this new service would both announce those events. So there could be some overlap in those areas, but those are the main areas that, that I see that happening. We know we had a big thing going with Trip to Green this last month, and got a lot of comments on that. I would assume that this new social media contract would be an excellent source to respond to those, get correct information out. Our goal is to get more readership on our social media, more people that are following us, et cetera, so that we can get that information out on a, on a fast, quicker basis, a more timely basis to them. So, except for those event-type things, I'm not sure there, there would be a lot of duplication, but there may, may be some, so.
Would this person be acting as a, as a PIO? It almost sounds like it, but, you know, that gets into different.
Public information officer.
Yeah. Not really acting as a public information officer. They will only, what, they will only respond to things that we approve of for them, them to go out, but they will create, in some critical situations, they'll create the message to be put out, but everything will be approved by the city that goes out.
All right. Any other questions?
I don't have a question. I just think that, you know, we've experienced so much chatter on, you know, the IT, Facebook and stuff that's been incorrect, and if this is certainly going to help correct that, boy, I'm all for it, because we, we've had a lot of that.
Oh, exactly. I mean, I, I think this is something I've been harping on for a couple of budgets.
I know you have.
In terms of Councilman Thomas's questions about a PIO, and it's, you're right, it's not necessarily a PIO, but I think it certainly helps just in maybe correcting the record in some cases, after it's approved, for content to go out. And I think the hopes also would be, as time goes by, that that person, you know, that it'll be more dynamic as well, so as information, as they learn more information, they'll be able to respond in more, in, you know, in time, timely as well. But I think there's like a three-hour window in there, that's where.
And the public would get more familiar with it and maybe tap into it more often.
Exactly.
It is really difficult to communicate with the public right now because everybody's on their own, you know, social media accounts and their own networks, and it takes a lot of time to try to be everywhere at once. And right now, our staff is trying to do that, and they're trying to weed through the comments that are out there. And I think it's really taxing in terms of the time it takes to stay ahead of the conversations that are happening in the community, and I think also it's just psychologically taxing sometimes.
I agree.
So having a buffer between our staff, who are hard at work doing their jobs, I think would be good for the, the organization of the city, and it would also just help us more effectively communicate with our community.
So you bring up another question I have for Cleve then. Would this be a back-and-forth, or would this just be a reporting? I mean, so if somebody, say they reported something, or there's rumors going around, would this person address that?
Yes.
Individual question, individual, okay.
Yes. And again, there's, there's certain rules that they have and they try to follow. Eventually, you don't keep going back and forth, back and forth. I mean, it, it doesn't work that way, but you put that factual information out there for, for the public. See, you may need to do it a couple of times to get the message across so everybody sees it. But I also, I, I, Mayor, if I could, I, I felt you as we started, I actually didn't see her, but Emily is here tonight, Emily Idelman, who is from Bold Communications. Emily, if you could stand up so I can introduce you to the council, and if you have any questions also, she can maybe answer some of these better than I can, so, thanks, Emily, so.
Hi, Emily, welcome.
Hi. Thank you for having me, and thank you for considering my contract. So my name is Emily Idelman, and I am an Eldorado County local. I started Bold Communications approximately five months ago. I had my second child, and I realized I wanted to be more active in my kids' lives and also in my community. So by starting this business, it allowed me to volunteer for organizations like Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Ponderosa Little League, Prospector Little League, or not Little League, sorry, Prospector Soccer Club. And, you know, my overall goal with social media isn't to make everybody like you, it's really to increase transparency, obviously in your favor, because a lot of the times what happens on social media is you guys aren't getting your message out there, somebody else puts a message out there, and it's not exactly correct or on point, and then it doesn't look so good for you. So it's not necessarily correcting the record, Vice Mayor, it's actually setting the record. So I have about five years of experience doing this. Prior to starting my own business, I was on the social media team for the Eldorado County District Attorney's Office, serving under Vern Pearson. And then I've also worked with nonprofit organizations such as the Eldorado County Fairgrounds and small businesses like Dawson's Pub and Grill. So I do have plenty of experience. I have certifications. I am also studying to get my digital audience strategy master's degree at Arizona State University. So I am not just somebody who sits on their phone and plays with TikTok all day, I promise. I know that could be a concern for some people who aren't super familiar with social media or all the aspects that it provides to, you know, businesses and organizations such as, you know, the, the Placerville Police Department or, you know, the city of Placerville, so.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions for Emily? I, I have a couple if no one else does, but, okay. In terms of posts per week, how many posts per week on our social media channels would we expect with this service agreement?
Ideally, I would like to start with three. So it's not necessarily the amount of posts that you have, it's more about consistency. So even if you're only posting two times per week, it's all about consistency. The Facebook algorithm, for example, does not favor people who post once a month and then sporadically post every single day, multiple times a day, and then it falls off. And that's kind of what happens with a lot of businesses and organizations. They give this duty to their employees who don't necessarily have the time or even the training for it, and so it tends to fall by the wayside, and then someone says, hey, why aren't we active? Somebody get on there, write something, anything. And then it picks back up for a hot minute, and then it falls back down again. So at least that was my experience, and I know in talking with other businesses, that's kind of their experience as well. So at least a couple posts a week to start with, and maintaining commentary, that's the biggest thing, is interacting with your constituents. People don't want to follow a page if they're not going to be responsive. It's like, ah, I'll just go ahead and post my quick little comment here because I'm frustrated. They don't care, they're not even going to respond to me anyway.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so you know other questions? I, I thank you for, for stepping up and introducing yourself. It's nice to meet you, and we will go ahead and, oh.
I just have one, one thing to say. Well, two things. I, I want to know what Rebecca is going to do with all our extra time now. So just, just, you know, I, I really would like to point out how much, our, our city engineer has been the one doing most of this work, and, and it, it honestly, she does not have to, I, she's our city engineer. We have, we have three, three in her department, and they've been doing yeoman's work this last several years with all the projects they've delivered, and she has still stepped up and taken on this project so that we could have communication with our community on a couple different platforms. And I want to express my appreciation for what you have done to, to give the city a more visibility to our constituents. I know how important that is with the various projects that have been going on, so thank you for that, and hopefully you can find some other things to do now.
Can I please go back to roads and pipes and fixing them?
Yes. Yeah, okay, good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Emily. We'll go ahead and open this item up to public comment at this time. If you would like to speak on it, please step up to the podium.
Nicole Gottberg, Placerville resident. I just had a couple things on this item. One is, I think a lot of the misinformation that runs around our community is within private social media groups, where there's administrators that control those groups and who has access to them and can see them and not. So I'm kind of wondering how this would address or not address that issue, because I do think a lot of the, what we're seeing in misinformation, myself personally, is within those private groups, not in public groups. I do think, you know, obviously Rebecca should be doing engineering things, and if this can help free up her time, I think it is a good use of funds, at least to sort of try it out and see how things go. I know looking at the HGL sales tax projections for next year, they don't look so rosy, so, and this is general fund money, so I do think we'd want to kind of look at that as we're going forward of, is social media outreach the best use of our funds, but I'm supportive of it tonight.
Thank you, Nicole.
Hello again, Kathy Lishman. I was kind of puzzled by this because I didn't know anything about it until it came on the agenda, not that I should, but for years and years and years, I have always felt it was important for the city to communicate and inform the public, long before Facebook and Twitter and TikTok were around. I didn't understand, and I kind of questioned, I know you don't have to go out to bid, but I wondered why it wasn't opened up for other vendors to submit proposals. So I'm really glad there was a presentation tonight. And $2,600 a month seems like quite a lot of money, especially when the city is always saying that they don't have the money to do the things that they should. I, I looked, and I couldn't find anything. I looked online, I couldn't find anything about what Bold Communications has done in the past, but now I understand that she's worked for other people and just started her own business. Something I would like to see, and, and it's not really social media, is a newsletter going out in the water bill every time, because not everybody uses social media, and a lot of people choose to stay away from it because of all the controversy that can be on it. And, and a lot of older people aren't really connected to it, so, and, and if this is just social media, I guess a newsletter is considered social media too, that could be put on the website, and, and I didn't know if it would include any articles in the paper or anything like that, so I just was wondering if. So I just was wondering if it was just limited to things like Facebook and Twitter and whatever else there is. Thanks.
Thank you, Kathy.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Mike Pettibone, and I think I know everybody in this room. And if I don't know you, we'll have a beer later. I'm going to just use a couple minutes here to introduce myself. I'm Mike Pettibone, I've been in the county since 1975. I've been in business as MJ Pettibone Builders for 31 years. I've been the creator of shortbusrides.com, a transportation company. I think most of you have been on one of my short buses, and you won't admit it, but I can point you out. I also have a current project I'm working on, the Mud Butt Ranch, 20 acres next to the college. And I hope to develop that into a retreat for companies outside Eldorado County to help develop economic development in Eldorado County and see what we have to offer, sort of like a wine and dine and stay for the weekend place. I also have two patents in the United States. Rapidnailer.com is my fourth company, and I just wanted to say you'll hear more from me later. But I've been here a while. I've seen how Placerville, the city, and the county has developed. I've worked with many of you in its development.
Mike, I'm going to pause you just for one second. Are you speaking on item 12.1?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'm getting to that.
Okay.
So I have two minutes left. So when it comes to communication and $2,600 a month, that's pretty small potatoes, considering all of your guys' time collectively would far exceed $2,600 a month. This is my point. My son recently kind of took over our sort of media, but he doesn't do it to the level that this would, and I am supportive of this for all your sake and our city's sake. What it's done for us and what it's done for my construction company is it's opened doors. We're now doing commercial work outside the county, we're building houses. I'm hoping to bring a Culinary Arts Institute to Placerville this year or next year. There's going to be a lot of things, you're going to see me. So in reference to this topic, I say I support it fully. And if somebody's on top of this, not only is it going to relieve all of you of your duty, it's going to keep the record straight, it's going to keep Placerville in everybody else's eyes, and I think that's a bargain. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Ruth Carter. I'm a resident of Placerville. I have a question to put out, a couple of questions. First one is, you said the Chamber of Commerce has a contract that's going to be reviewed at the end of this year, I believe. How much is that costing per month in addition to this new cost? And was this put out for public bid or is this a no-bid issue? Thank you.
Sue Rodman, Measure H, Measure L Committee. My concern with this is the funding. Measure H and L are listed as possible funding sources to pay for this project. I doubt that this would be a legal use of these funds, as Measure H and L clearly state that they are for repair and maintenance of city water, sewer, and road infrastructure only. So I see that as a problem. If you're going to try and fund this out of Measure H and L, I don't think it will fly illegally. And I would definitely not support that. We need every penny out of Measure H and L to do what they are designed to do. We have enough problems with water, sewer, and roads to take every penny we can get.
Thank you, Sue.
Hi, Sue Taylor. I always get concerned when the government agency kind of veers into the business world. And I, you know, government is supposed to have certain protocol when it comes to procedures and should also like having to do with information. And I know, you know, I read a little bit of the contract, and the provider can, at their discretion during certain times, put a comment on. And I don't know if that takes that information out of the role of the city, or, I mean, if you have a, and it sounds like mostly you're concerned about misinformation, like you're not getting something that's bothering you out to people. And I know that there's a lot of, I guess it'd be good to be more specific when you feel that those things are, and then maybe have an open dialogue, that these are issues that you're having. I mean, you could put, I mean, the city puts information in the Mountain Democrat and different things, but I guess I'm concerned about the role and how that is going to play out. Because, you know, the Brown Act only lets two of you meet together. Can a social media provider just put out a comment without a conversation with the city council or maybe the department head or somebody that has the answers to that question? So I would worry, you know, what's the protocol for making comments? You know, is it going to go back to that department that there, people are complaining about or having an issue with and reached out to clarify? And then I would really suggest, if you feel like there's things that are not put out correctly, you need to make sure you put out documents that back up whatever. I mean, you're government, people don't always trust you. And to say, this is the answer, and this is because we say so, doesn't always fly. So maybe in that, you actually provide documents to say, this is why we think this way. But I do think you need to be careful about the role of government versus getting to the world of businesses. So those are my two cents. Thanks.
Thank you, Sue. All right. I see nobody else wishing to speak on this item, so we'll bring it back to the council at this time. Cleve, a couple of questions came up, and perhaps you can address them. In terms of, you know, what is going to be our protocol for putting information out? We had talked about perhaps on the weekly meeting, and it would mostly be, you know, the department heads would get together and let this service provider know what the city's priorities were for messages to get out, as well as minutes from council meetings that were public and decisions had already been made, not things that were upcoming that could potentially be, you know, infringe on the Brown Act requirements.
Yeah. First thing I want to mention, hopefully Emily will agree with me, and I think we've talked about it, is that anything that she puts out would be approved by the city, either by myself or a department head, depending on what the item is, what the issue is. So she will not have that authority to just put what her opinion is, it will be what we have approved and what will go out. In terms of how that will happen, yes, we will provide her with information about various topics, whether it be, I think that one of the big topics will be a review, for example, perhaps of important items that were on our agenda on tonight, so later in the week would come out once the contract is up and running. And we, I have a staff meeting with my department heads every Wednesday, and I think we would identify those items at that time and get that information to Emily, and we can discuss whether or not it's a hot-ticket item that we think we need to put out, or if it's just a normal item. So, and then the other items are going to be things that come up from the public that maybe we get those, that we don't expect to be there, and all of a sudden, we don't see that as was going to be a hot issue, and it is. And those may be things that we may not see, but Emily may see as she monitors social media. And she would then report that to us and say, for example, I think you need to consider this. We will discuss that at our department head meetings, and then if need be, have her put together a post on that. So that's basically how I see that it would move forward.
Okay. And then some other things that came up. Kathy Lishman had a good point about newsletters, and I don't recall seeing newsletters in the scope of work. So would this encompass constant contact?
We did talk about having constant contact as part of that. If I remember right, Emily, you were not as familiar with constant contact, but I think we can work on that and bring something together for that. I don't know that a full write of a full newsletter was part of what would be part of her contract. We can discuss that with her and see how that might work. It may be something where we may ask department heads to write an article from time to time to include in a newsletter. But we will, we do want to look at continuing that newsletter and figuring out how it can work.
Okay. And then also mentioned was the newsletter going out in the water bill. And just to comment on that, I think it's a great idea to have newsletters in the water bill every month. However, we are upgrading to allow for online payments, and that is going to really further impede our ability to communicate with people in that way, because a lot of people will choose to pay online.
And will have their email.
If they...
Select it.
Select it.
Yep.
And then there was a question about if this went out to public bid and if you could just let the public know whether or not that's required.
At this dollar amount and the type of service that it is, it does not require us to do a public bid or obtain other estimates on that. We viewed this with Bold Communications and felt comfortable with their services, and that's why we were recommending that. If the council felt it necessary, we could go back and try and obtain other proposals.
Okay. And then in terms of funding this, let's talk a little bit about how we want to do that. So there's, my understanding is that there's $50,000 in ARPA funding that has not been allocated for anything.
Approximately, yes, correct.
And then there is approximately $200,000 that will be coming back that was previously allocated to vegetation management.
That is correct.
And then there's the $287,000 that we allocated to the county, which it sounds like that will be coming back as well. So I think that we could fund this out of ARPA. I agree that we should, we should not plan on funding it out of Measures H and L.
So let me address, there was one more question about Measure H and Measure L. We did put that in as potential. I understand the issues with that. It would be very limited if ever that we would use Measure H and Measure L. It would be more along the lines of if we had a road project that we wanted to get the information out, and this road was going to be closed, that it was a Measure H, Measure L project, I think that could be an appropriate use for the fund. But other than that, we would not use it. It would only be, it'd have to be particular to that and identifying how we could do a direct charge to that. We are not looking at that currently.
That just makes sense, and that's the way I understood it, too, is that you would just take it out for, if it pertained to either one of those funds. I would, Kara, are you through?
Yeah, yeah.
I just wanted to ask you, back to the why we didn't put this out to bid. So did you get a, do you have a general idea that this is a fair price or?
Yeah, then when I've talked to other people about it, they thought this was a very reasonable price. Michael can...
Yeah, I mean, we do a lot of this work for, on clients that we end up farming out. And this is a very, very competitive price for this, for this type of service, I would say. And I think the other thing that I liked was the fact that Emily, you know, worked for, in the DA's office, understands Eldorado County, which I think is always important when we're talking about social media within our county and our city. And I thought that was an added bonus that you, you know, probably wouldn't get from another vendor, say from Sacramento or somewhere else in the state or even out of state.
I don't necessarily like doing this, but I'm going to throw this in the mix anyway. And that is that we have the chamber coming up with their contract, and that's $50,000 that we contracted for a year with in marketing and such. And considering that contract, and this is also something that they're, they have social media departments and things that they do, and their contract has come up pretty quickly here, is it reasonable to consider that, to evaluate both of these and take a look at that as we move forward? I mean, what's, what's a month or, actually a month from now?
I think they're two different things, though. Because I mean, this one is working on behalf of the city in an official capacity, representing the city. The other is promoting the city.
And promoting our business districts.
Promoting our business districts, whereas this is, you know, it is a function of...
I'm not saying they'd be promoting the city as a business, because they have a social media department that does these types of things as well. And so that's, I need to put that out on the table, because we're going to be coming up to making a decision in September, potentially, on September, on the chamber's contract. And these, this is like, I'm looking at this as, you know, are we talking apples? It's possible? Is it, are we going to spend so much here and so much here, and we're going to, we could have done it better by bringing it together in some way and not spending so much, but still getting bang for our buck? It's a matter of considering these variables.
I think the way I would look at it is, like, for an instance, if we had a very, like, we've had a very expensive request for information, and there was a lot of information put out into social media world, I just don't see that being the appropriate for having the Chamber of Commerce be the one taking on those types of questions for the city, or even for Green Means Go. I mean, not Green Means Go, but yeah, it could be Green Means Go if green projects come up. So I mean, to me, it is, as you've mentioned before, Dennis, like, they are functions like a PIO in some regards, whereas the other one is strictly a marketing about what we're doing for our city. So to me, these are two different types of contracts.
The chamber does, you know, does operate as a non-political entity, and so I could, I could understand that to a certain extent.
So Dennis, are you saying that the chamber also does, like, social media monitoring and responding on comments on behalf of clients? Because I didn't realize that.
Well, on behalf of what they post, they do that. So it's a function of, you do a post and you respond to it. They are adept at doing social media content.
But they're posting through Visa Eldorado, right?
You can post through whatever media, medium or media you choose. It's not, it's, it's not that they're going to post through their media, it's, they're going to, they're going to do what they do on our platform, is what I was, potentially. I mean, it's, it's, it's really not, I'm not trying to market them. What I'm saying is that, and I don't even know that they would want this, but I do know that we're going to have a conversation about all of this together when, we're going to have a conversation about them as well, and that was a $50,000 contract.
Well, I see there is a little bit of a conflict of interest there, because the chamber takes, sometimes takes a side on issues. And so we're not really going to want them putting out our unbiased information when they are in fact biased on issues. You know, that's, I kind of agree with Michael, there really, there will be that overlap in promoting events and those sorts of things. I look at what we're about to do as basically going to the city for facts. You want to, you want to get this information out, you want people to come to the city. When one speaker mentioned, you know, you have private groups that are putting out information, well, this is kind of like the fact check. Okay, well, they said this, but, you know, what did the city say? What did they actually approve? Where's the actual verbiage in that? And that's where we can, you know, help put out those messages, redirect that misinformation. And so I really kind of think they're an apples-to-oranges type thing in general.
I agree. I do want to say that I love what the chamber has done to promote our business districts and to promote the city. I think that they've done a fantastic job. I'm not prejudging the item that's going to be coming before us in September, but I'm, you know, I'm very open to having a continued relationship with them. But I do, I do think that these are different roles. Also, Cleve, this proposal is for six months and then month-to-month or is it month-to-month?
Well, it's actually for a year, but I, one of the provisions, there's in the provision that the contractor, Bold Communications, can terminate with, at any time, I think it has a 30-day's notice. I think that we should have that reciprocal for the city if we determine that, for whatever reason, it's not working or we can't afford it, whatever, we should have that option in there for the city. And so as, if you decide to approve this, I would recommend that that be a provision that be added to the contract.
Okay. I agree with that provision being added. So I would feel comfortable moving forward with this. We can still hear, you know, the chamber's proposal, and if they cover some of these same things, we can kind of talk about and make adjustments, it sounds like.
I think it was important to have the conversation, and I'm not, this is not a deal breaker by any stretch of imagination. As I was reviewing this item, I, you know, that popped into my head, so I thought it would be important to talk about it.
All right.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve a contract with Bold Communications.
I'll second it.
All right. We have our first and a second. Regina, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember No? Aye. Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Mayor Taylor?
Aye. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to item 12.2. And this is in regards to purchasing some vegetation management equipment. And Mr. Zeller has this report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The staff report is for the purchase of three pieces of equipment. And those pieces of equipment will allow the city to maintain the properties that have been cleared, along with right-of-way areas that we are responsible for as a city, and also along the sides of the Eldorado Trail. The pieces of equipment consist of a track loader, which is basically a tracked, small loader with a with the ability to have a bucket or other attachments on the front, and then purchasing an attachment, which is a masticator, which basically grinds up small trees and shrubs. And also, the third piece is a separate walk-behind brush mower that will come in handy for smaller areas and getting into areas where the blackberry and other things are. So the Community Services Department and the Public Works Departments have been tasked with reducing fuels on city property. And that's both to lower fire danger and to demonstrate the city's commitment to be an example for the community on how to manage property for fire danger. And the purchase of this equipment is necessary to meet that objective. It's also falling under Section 3 of our strategic plan strategy, which is under Health and Public Safety for wildfire protection and disaster preparedness. The environmental aspect is that this action is exempt from CEQA per the guideline, Section 15304I, as it is a fuel management within 100 feet of structures to reduce the volume of flammable vegetation. And also under Section 15269C, specific actions necessary to prevent or mitigate an emergency. So getting to the funding aspect, in September of last year, the City Council did approve an initial $409,950 budget appropriation for fuel reduction treatment for the city property. And that was under Project Number 42241. Staff is recommending an additional $209,950 from the ARPA Fund, undesignated fund balance for a total project budget of $619,900. And on the second page of the staff report, you can see what the uncovered costs have been to date, including the purchase of these pieces of equipment. The only thing to really address is that we have something for Hilltop Tree Service, which is proposed, and that's a $56,000 and change. And that is also going to be coming up in another staff report under a separate cover. And so you can see, under the total for the $423,561, we are well below the proposed $619,900 project budget. So with that, I can take any questions from the council.
Thank you. Terry, any questions?
I don't have any questions. I just want to thank staff. I was pushing for this for the long-term fuel maintenance, so I appreciated this coming back as a long-term solution. I also wanted to let you know there are two council members on this side of the dais who are signing up to get trained to use the track loader.
One question I have, Terry, in, you know, as we've we've talked about wanting to do this as a council, one concern from staff that came up was that there just wasn't enough staff to operate these pieces of equipment. I'm assuming that by bringing this forward, that has been resolved, is that...
We're looking at this as, you know, the equipment is going to provide some offset for some of the other things that we do, especially on the parks side of things. And so, for instance, the the brush mower itself is going to create a lot of efficiency for our staffing, for a lot of the maintenance that they do on our park properties, as well as the trail. So I think that there is going to be a balance struck there between the conservation of some of these labor hours that we have, where people are going out with tiny weed whips and trying to take care of large areas. It's just not the correct equipment.
Well, good, I'm glad to hear that. It will not only, you know, help us with our long-term vegetation management, but will alleviate some staff staff time and efficiency. So I was happy to see this item coming forward.
Yeah, I'll just make a comment. I mean, I'm really happy to see this project or this item come forward. I mean, I seen just seen Councilman Thomas's tractor in action on community cleanup day. I mean, we couldn't have done an eighth of what we did at the cemetery without your tractor. So I know, you know, with this added machinery, we're going to be able to do a lot of work that would take a lot of human hours to do on their own, and so, or goats. And so I'm just really looking forward to seeing this come forward and being able to vote on it. Thank you.
All right. I will go ahead and open this up to the public. If anyone would like to speak on item 12.2.
Now it's working. Anyway, Sue Rodman, Placerville resident and member of the Fire Safe Council. These machines would allow the city some greater flexibility and allow them to accomplish the vegetation management work that really needs to be done. And I had a question as to whether we had city personnel who are both available and trained to operate them safely. And I'm glad Terry cleared that up by saying, yes, we do. So let's go for it.
Thank you, Sue.
Nicole Gottberg, Placerville resident. I think wildfire safety and vegetation management is super important and critical for our community. And while we have the funds to buy some equipment that will help us with that and gain efficiencies, we should do it. So I wholeheartedly support this item.
Thank you, Nicole.
The word masticator sounds bad, and I'm wondering, is it going to be that things are going to look absolutely terrible? I know it's to help with the fire safety. And when things are trimmed off, I mean, I I see things along the sides of roads. A lot of times, the material is left behind, but is it really going to change the look of our city a lot?
Thank you, Kathy. All right, I will close public comment. Terry, can you address that last question regarding, you know, any impact it might have on the cityscape?
Yeah, the masticator is certainly not a chipper. It does provide, I mean, when it when it grinds things up, it it does provide some some rough brush and things like that. But it's to a point where it kind of blends into the forest floor after a while. Sure, it's going to change the look of the city, but the alternative is something I don't think anybody wants to think about. So we're going to be as careful as we can about damaging the the look of Placerville, but we do have to make some sacrifices in order to stay safe.
Thank you, Terry. I will just add that I've I have family that's got quite a bit of acreage in Eldorado County, and I have seen a lot of acres masticated. And when it's done, assuming it's done right, it really does, I think, look nice. It's just like opened up, like, parkland. You can walk in there, and, you know, after after a little while, the wood chips kind of break down. And I think it's an improvement versus just dangerous brush that is a real fire hazard. So but, you know, it kind of also goes along the lines, I think, her concerns with an earlier comment from Sue Rodman about cleanup that was kind of maybe left unfinished. So we will just want to make sure that, you know, we're we're doing our our best to get the job done and make everything look nice afterwards.
This this was, this is all part of a grand plan that we had for doing this. And this is part of a bigger program that we put in place a while back. And so I appreciate the staff doing this and bringing this up and getting this done. And now, going into winter, it's a great time to clear out a lot of stuff. We had, I was I was really worried. We had a masticator come out and work on our property quite a bit here recently, and I was worried that my wife would be really upset about that and how it looked. And she actually was thrilled about it, because it really does look good if done right. And the guy that we had do it, he he spent his time, the more you go over it, the more, it just grinds things right into the ground, it just disappears. And this just pulverizes, it'll pulverize that, all the, what do you call that, quartz that we had on our property, it just like disappeared. They're very effective at what they do. And it's it's a great tool for for our staff, not only to be used for mastication, but it also has buckets that can be used in in other constructions and road issues that they have as well. So it's going to serve multiple purposes.
Yeah. All right. Would anyone like to make a motion on this?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution.
I'll second.
All right. I think we should give this to Jackie, because she...
She wants to drive it.
She really...
This is, I should have let her make the motion.
All right, so we have a first and a second. Can we get a roll call, Regina, please?
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Mayor Taylor?
Aye. Thank you. Moving on to 12.3. This is regarding more fuels reductions with a contract with Hilltop Tree Service. And Mr. Zeller has this report as well.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's all about fuel reduction for us tonight. This is also, if you recall, we had 11 different sites that we had identified as needing fuels reduction. And the first three sites were taken care of by the Phase 1 project that is being undertaken right now by Hilltop or by Foothill Tree. And so our last eight properties, which are more in number but smaller properties, is the final phase of our fuel reduction project that would mimic the the 2020 grant that, or the 2021 grant that we did not get. And so I did reach out to local tree service companies, and I did get three responding to our properties. And I'll just read them off for you real quick here. The wastewater reclamation facility, there's eight acres of property there that needs to be cleared. Property on Crestview Drive, that's a small parcel that the city picked up at some point in the development process, and that's got a hilly wooded area, and that's about a third of an acre. Rotary Park has about an acre and a half, mostly tucked around the residential edge of of the of the park that needs attention. Duffy Park has a long hillside, kind of a tailpiece along the property. It's pretty odd shaped, but there's about two acres in there that needs to be taken care of. Lumpston Park are, we only own 4.1 acres of the actual area of Lumpston Park. Most of that, the other 100-plus acres, is private property that's been discussed before with the council. But we're looking at about two and a half acres of that is wooded that needs attention. The City Corp yard on Big Cut Road is a little, it's about an acre of area, mostly along the edges. The old water treatment plant on Party Way is about an acre and a half. And we also, for some reason, own a parcel at the intersection of Ray Lawyer and Fairlane, and that's about 5.8 acres. So you can see on page two of your staff report that we did get quotes from Foothill, Sierra Tree Care, and Hilltop Tree Service. And staff is recommending that we go with the the low quote of $56,752.29. And just to reiterate, we have the same budget breakdown that we had for our equipment here, this time highlighting the fact that we're requesting the $56,752 from Hilltop Tree Service be awarded against the total $619,900 project budget. And with that, I can take any questions.
Thank you, Terry. Yes, Michael?
Thank you, Terry. Just one question. In terms of, there's such a big discrepancy in the amount between Hilltop and the other two bidders. Any, is there any concern there? I mean, I just, I mean, is this, we're going to get, like, 25 change orders to, you know, where it's going to get to that other price? I just, can they do it at that amount? It just seems really low compared to the other, the other two.
If you recall, for the Phase 1 work, we had one bid that came in at about 55% of the other. So I think it has to do with, I've had, I've spent enough time with each one of these companies, making sure that they were apples to apples, and made sure that they all had their prevailing wage costs in. And we're looking at the exact same descriptions, maps. And we did have some, we actually had Sierra Tree Care increase their costs some because of prevailing wage, and so did Hilltop over their original quote. So I think we've covered all the bases we need to, to make sure that we're not going to run over on this.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Terry? All right, I'll go ahead and open this up to the public. If you would like to speak on item 12.3, please step up to the podium.
Sue Rodman, Fire Safe Council, again. I have seen Hilltop Tree Services work, and they do excellent work. The city definitely has trees that will be more complex than just taking a chainsaw to the base of the trunk. Hilltop should be able to handle the complexity of work that's needed in the city, and these areas really do have some trees that need to be taken out. So I support this.
Thank you, Sue. All right, I will close public comment. Bring it back to the council.
I'd like to go ahead and move this item as presented.
Second. For clarification, was that second by Councilmember Borelli?
Give it to Patty.
Jackie, that doesn't matter.
All right, we have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Mayor Taylor?
Aye. Thank you. All right, we are going to move on to item 12.4. This is to authorize the mayor to sign a letter to the State Department of Housing and Community Development to support of an infill infrastructure grant application. And Mr. Vivas has this report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Just to give a little background on the project, this proposed project consists of the demolition of the existing Placerville Armory Facility that's located at the northeast corner of Ray Lawyer Drive and Armory Drive, and the construction of approximately 83 affordable residential units to serve low and moderate income individuals and families. The project will be constructed and managed by Jamboree Housing Corporation on a long-term lease basis with the state of California. City staff has been actively involved in a collaborative process with Jamboree staff and the State Department of General Services, the State Department of Housing and Community Development Department, and the Eldorado County in implementation and design of the project. Jamboree will be making an application for IIG, which is Infill Infrastructure Grant, assistance with HCD to provide for funding for infrastructure improvements necessary for the construction of the project. Eligible projects or eligible improvements would include projects such as curb, gutter, sidewalk, utility connections, and the onsite improvements such as tuck-under parking. These funds are allocated through a competitive process based on the merits of the individual infill projects and the area in which it is located. Although a letter of support from the governing body is required for a nonprofit or for a for-profit developer of a qualified infill project, such as this one, to make a IIG application with HCD, it is the state and not the city that has jurisdiction over the project. This request is that the city is supportive of the application for infill infrastructure grant for the funding of these funding improvements in support of the project, not for the overall project, but for the grant application. Jamboree proposes to submit the application to HCD by August 25. With that, staff is recommending that the mayor sign the letter to the State Department of Housing and Community Development in support of the infill infrastructure grant application made by Jamboree Housing Corporation for the construction of the affordable housing project on the Placerville Armory site. With that, staff would be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
All right, Pierre, thank you. Are there any questions regarding this item?
I do have a few. When this came before us previously, I do know that there was several questions about parking and, you know, the the average, the amount of parking per units of housing there. Did we get any, you know, we presented issues and concerns that we had. Were any of those issues or concerns... Were any of those issues or concerns addressed or even acknowledged by the Jamboree?
Yes, they were. There was a, if the council recalls, staff did come to the council to address the preparation of a mitigated negative declaration that was prepared for the project, and we actively sought to promote that so that the public and other interested parties could participate in the design of the project through comments on its design. That comment period ran from May 11th through June 10th of this year. The comment period has closed. Parking was an issue that was raised. I was aware that that was going to happen, and so I looked through the MND and looked at some of the mitigation measures in regards to parking, just so that the council understands. Under city code, if this were a city project, under city jurisdiction, we would have required one and a half spaces per unit. There's 83 units, so we would have required 125 parking stalls. Currently, they're providing for 87. So some of the mitigation measures, and I'll go ahead and read this, this is directly out of the MND that's already been approved by the State Department of General Services. So the project would provide for transportation features to promote non-motorized transportation and carpooling. Transportation features include bike parking. The facility would include convenient indoor overnight and secure bicycle parking for residents. Additional outdoor secure biking parking for residents and guests would also be available. Bike, skate, skateboard, and scooter access will be available by rent. Jamboree would provide or coordinate with a third-party local cycle provider to offer access to bicycles, roller skates, skateboards, scooters, if feasible, to residents and guests. This would also enable equitable access to low-income residents to fully access nearby retail, transit, school, library, and county office facilities. On-site bike programs, depending upon demand. Jamboree also plans on a pilot onsite bike program. Bicycles would be purchased and stored onsite and would be available for checkout and check-in on demand. Sidewalks, walking paths, greenery, outdoor furniture, the development would be designed to encourage walking with benches, appropriate play equipment, trees and other greenery, appropriate lighting and signage. Car parking innovation would include exploring a car share or rideshare program for the site and investigate the potential for obtaining funding through the El Dorado County or Quality Management District funding programs. Regarding transit passes, Jamboree would facilitate access to transit passes for residents. Low-income residents may be eligible for discounted or free transit passes provided by the government, in which case Jamboree would advise and assist them in procuring passes. So that, that's some of the mitigation measures that were proposed in the environmental document. It was interesting to learn that in, in the scoring of these types of grants, that reduced parking increases the scoring for the project. So you would think that that wouldn't be so, but that is the case. The state of California, of course, has its own goals and objectives that may be, let's just say, a little different than maybe the cities, but it is a state project. Again, so, you know, we really don't have any say other than input into the project. And so again, I think if there are individuals that are still interested in providing comment, I did talk with Jamboree, and they said, I, you know, they can submit comments to us and to the department, and we're happy to continue to submit those to Jamboree as they, you know, continue forward with finalizing their, their project.
Thank you. Thank you, Pierre. That, that has a whole lot of giggle factor in it. With all the things that they have in there that they're going to use, because people are just going to give up their cars and get a skateboard? I, I question their sincerity in that approach to solving the problem that our city's going to have if they don't have adequate parking, at least to the standards of our community, and not, you know, I just, that's, that's a concern for me.
Pierre, was there also talk of them buying a strip of property to convert to parking that runs adjacent to the project?
Yes, there is a strip of county-owned property that, that just runs between the Armory Project Site and Ray Lawyer Drive. And so it's a very thin, narrow piece there at the intersection with Armory Drive and Ray Lawyer Drive, and it, it runs and parallel and sort of, you know, enlarges a little bit towards the east end. So they're looking at acquiring that from the county, using that for an additional ingress and egress location and for additional parking.
Okay. Do you have any idea how many parking spaces that would?
No, I don't. I don't have that on hand.
Okay. And that's the state trying, the state hoping to buy it from the county? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions for Keith?
I just had a question on, in terms of traffic flow. Was there any mitigation done in terms of Armory Drive and just, you know, it's hard to maneuver through there as it is today, but it just in terms of the traffic that, you know, may be going through that area, was there anything that's in there, that's in the, the project scope in terms of egress? And I know you said there may be minus this one parcel that would help with that, but is there anything else for Armory, or is it sort of as-is as it is today?
Yeah, the main act, the main access will be from Armory, and that, that strip of Armory that, that lies joining the Armory Site is, is fully within the project site. It's actually owned by the state. And so they do intend, that's what these funds will help fund, would be curb, gutter, and sidewalk. And for an appropriate approach, I know during some of the, the fair activities, it would probably look at right-in, right-out only kind of thing, or, or limit access on that during those times of the year where there's expected to be significant traffic. But again, I would refer anybody to look at the MND, and then they can certainly have discussions with, with either Jamboree or the state on that, since the city has very limited, if not any, ability to affect changes to that other than just provide additional comments. Thank you.
So Pierre, in regard, that same thing. So they would use Ray Lawyer Drive to Armory as the in and out? I mean, they wouldn't go around the back and then go down, like next to Rayleigh's and use that out onto Placerville Drive? That's not being considered?
I know that the, the project is proposing two points of ingress and egress, one from Armory Drive and one from Ray Lawyer Drive. So I think if you're looking at the individual tenant, I think it depends upon where you're parked on the site as to which access you would use, if, if that's what your question is.
But Armory Drive, to me, it's, that is, is Armory Drive considered the whole street that, you know, runs alongside, you know, where you turn in, where the service stations are, and you go past Rayleigh's parking lot? Is that considered Armory Drive, or is Armory Drive at the top of the hill?
I think that that entire roadway is Armory Drive.
So...
So it connects with Ray Lawyer Drive, and then...
So then they would use that one that also goes on to Placerville Drive?
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
And I also have the same concern that Dennis has, and that's parking. I really would like to see that addressed more fully.
Just to reiterate a point that you had kind of passed over, this is state-owned property, and this is a state project. The city is not approving this project. The, the state did not seek the city's approval for this project. Is that correct?
That is correct. City has, has no jurisdiction over this piece of property. It's state-owned, state project. We've just been trying to facilitate, get the word out. For example, when we came, we went to the Planning Commission, we went to the City Council to make sure that people were aware of the availability of the mitigated negative deck, the draft, to be able to review that document, submit comments on that document.
Okay. And, and given that we don't have approval authority on this project, it does make sense for the city of Placerville to be available and cooperative with the project team in order to make sure that our concerns are addressed in the process and that we can provide local information about impacts that this project may have.
Yes, that is correct. And again, this letter is to support the, the application be submitted for the infrastructure grant, and I think the city would support that, given that hopefully it can fund curb, gutter, and sidewalk along the road frontage that currently does not exist, prove the safety of pedestrians along that project.
Okay. Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify that we, the city has had quite a bit of input in on this project. It's gone to the Planning Commission. It's come to the City Council before to address all the issues and all the upgrades that we could possibly do, what would be in accordance with our ordinance. So this isn't the first time this is ever coming before us or that we've considered it.
Right. That is correct. Staff has tried to assist the state in facilitating a more open, transparent, public comment on the project. And so as we had stated before, when we came before you, is even those comments that we received today for this hearing, we've already forwarded those comments to the state.
Pierre, do you, can you give any examples of, of concerns that the city has, has, has expressed and how they have mitigated those concerns?
Well, the project does not comply with the city's parking regulations in terms of it's currently underparked, and we've made, they're aware of that. They have our codes.
Yeah.
We also would like to see, hopefully, curb, gutter, sidewalk extend as far as it can from the project site towards the fairgrounds site. So they're going to try and do that as best as they can, but it's not a requirement. Again, we just...
I, I know, but usually, well, I will, I, I take that back. You would like to think that the state's going to come in here and be a partner with us instead of come in here and do what they want. And, and what I'm feeling is that they have not really, you know, they're a partner in listening to us, but they're not a partner in mitigating, at least as far as I can tell. And it's just an honest answer. I don't, I don't know. Have they, I, it's a serious, because I don't know the answer to that question. I'm not asking one that I expect, you know, that I know what you're going to say. But have they mitigated any of the concerns we have that we've provided them?
Well, I think the, the one issue was the parking issue, and I read to you, and of course, I heard some giggles out there. So I think that answers the question regarding that particular impact.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Pierre. I know a lot of people are here for comment. I had actually intended to take a five-minute break before taking up this item, so I'm going to do that now because I anticipate public comment taking a while. So we're going to take five minutes, and we'll come back and take public comment on this. All right. We'll, we'll go ahead and get started here, and I will make a couple of comments, and then I'll open this item up to the public. First, I want to recognize that we have two of our past District Three supervisors here tonight, Jack Sweeney and Brian Veerkamp, and we also have at least three City Council candidates here tonight, Ruth Carter, Nicole Gottberg, and John Clarici. And if I'm missing anyone...
Me?
Oh, I'm sorry. And Dennis, and Dennis is here. And if I'm missing anyone, I'm sorry. I haven't met you yet.
Yeah, he's here.
Just before I open this up to the public, I just want to reiterate a couple of points. The grant that we're being asked to support is for frontage improvements. It's for sidewalks, improvements to Armory Road and curb and gutter. It is not, it will not make or break this project. We are not, the agenda item is not to debate the merits of the project. That's not what this is. And just a couple other things I want to point out. This project will serve residents with 80% median area income or less. That's $84,000 is what our median area income is right now for a household, and 80% of that is $67,200. There's been a lot of concern that, you know, the, the people that will be living here will negatively impact children's programs that happen at the fair. You know, people that fall within this income range, they are many, probably most, single parents, young families, college, recent college graduates, workers in our retail and restaurant sectors, artists, senior citizens living on fixed incomes. So I just wanted to put that in perspective because we have gotten lots of comments about the types of people that will be using this facility. And I think that there's a lot of kind of...
Misinformation.
...misunderstanding about that. So with that, I will open it up to the public. Comments, if you could state your name. I appreciate being able to put faces to names, and please keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Hi, Reese Carter, Placerville city resident and a candidate for City Council, as you just said. I want to start by saying that I am a real estate broker. I've been doing all things real estate for over 17 years. I'm 110% for affordable housing when it's done the right way. I understand what I'm hearing from the council and from support staff is that the city has no say in this project. However, I do feel like there is something that we can do. This is the wrong location, as parking was brought up, as one of the many items, the congestion from the traffic, the activities at the fairgrounds, how that's going to conflict, and how inconvenient would it be for those residents, by the way. In addition, and then you've got the noise from our wonderful Speedway. They're likely to cause problems with that. It's just overall the wrong fit. It's a square peg trying to fit into a round hole. It doesn't work. This is a historical site. Why are we not writing a letter saying this is a historical site? We need to preserve our history. So there is something that we can do. I feel very strongly about that. I am going to personally, you know, try to work on the historical side of things, and I really want to encourage City Council to write that in their notes if they're writing a letter as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth.
Peg Vanderkar, Placerville. I'm also Secretary of Housing Eldorado, and I wanted to read this brief letter of support from Housing Eldorado. But first, I want to note that, again, as Kara, as Mayor, Mayor Taylor said, this is affordable housing for people who, who have a lot more income than many of us, and many single people are not going to have two cars. However, I am concerned about the parking, too. Let me say that. Housing Eldorado wishes to support and complement the City Council on moving forward with Jamboree Housing to build much-needed workforce housing at the Armory Site. This location is ideal in that it is consistent with nearby similar housing, and it is close to shopping, service provider locations, and transportation. One goal of Housing Eldorado is to support the increase in affordable housing opportunities on the western slope. Your leadership is critical in moving forward in this area. So thank you very much. And again, I'll put in a plug for more parking. Thank you.
Thank you, Peg.
Brian Veerkamp, good evening, council, Madam Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'm representing myself, Coalition of County-City Residents. Some of them are pioneer hyster, I mean, historical, I was going to say hysterical, but no. Families that have been around the fairgrounds, obviously, for quite a long time. As you alluded to, supervisor, ex-supervisor Sweeney and myself are here as well with some sequel experience and a few projects under our belt that either did or did not move forward. And we have some concerns. Pierre would love to send some comments, and we'll give you a letter tonight around those comments. But someone just wanted to point out that we think are inadequate. We've sent comments to them. We don't have responses back. That's a problem in, in and of itself, we feel. And an interim final mitigated negative deck, I never saw one in eight years that I was with, with the county. So, so some of the items that we're concerned about, this is not a flat piece of ground. It's on a hill, covered by heritage oak trees. And believe me, I know what a heritage oak tree is in this county and city. Storm runoff water not properly addressed. We have issues at the fairgrounds now. Rebecca, you all know, we've been working on that for years now, and some fixes are in the mix. But you get a good rainstorm, Fairlane Shopping Plaza floods the fairgrounds. So there's issues around that. And I don't believe in the mitigated negative deck. They've addressed runoff and, and gotten the easements necessary for that water. Where's it going to go? We, we can't figure that out. Obviously, the increased traffic, access egress not properly addressed. The improvements to Armory Drive off-site aren't addressed. Yes, we've discussed them, but I would want guarantees. I, I know it's the state, but again, this is just not a flat piece of ground in the city of Sacramento or somewhere else in the state. This has got potential major issues. El Dorado County has not approved the, the use they've authorized on action to negotiate. on action to negotiate, but there's no formal agreement yet for secondary or primary access point off of Ray Lawyer, and let alone the other piece that was mentioned about parking. Project density, we believe meets or exceeds city codes as well as the height of the project. I know county fire has a new ladder truck in the works, but at four stories, it's probably the tallest building in the city. And again, code-wise, I think that might be an issue. Again, our public comments have been misplaced. We have not got responses to them. We were asking for those responses and still haven't got them. The public safety of existing residents in the area, as well as the future residents, I think are being put at risk. And, you know, to me, we're going to be part of a project that may have issues. That's just not, in my opinion, in our opinion, a good thing. The project site itself is surrounded by high hazard severity zone for fires. So that access egress is going to be important. I know the fairgrounds is carved out of that high hazard severity zone you guys just talked about a couple of weeks ago. But still, it's surrounded by it, which makes it even more of a risk. Our understanding that supporting this grant application could bring and invite deeper city liability, deep pocket city liability. So that may be something you want to take into account by being supportive. We will help, we will help band together and oppose, and we'll take it to a higher level of the state if you so choose. If not, we are going to do that. So finally, we object to this grant support for these reasons stated here. I'll give you the handout that we've put together, and we are forwarding it on to the board of supervisors as well as state officials also. So appreciate your time. And you know, obviously, you know, Jack, myself, and others are always available to answer questions. As a matter of fact, we're probably seeing Laffco tomorrow night, so fire away. But thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Brian.
And I'll leave some of these with the court.
Madam Council, Madam Mayor, good evening. I'm kind of glad to be here tonight, because it's the first time that I get to see all the youth on the council. I'm one of the families that's been raised in this area. We bought first property about 1952 in the area. And then, when the county got ready to build Ray Lawyer Drive, and they'd already tried to expand the fairgrounds, we put a lot of property together. And in that, we bought property from foreigners, as did Rayleigh, and we gave that property for Ray Lawyer Drive, and we gave a couple of vacant parcels. One of the vacant parcels is a very parcel that the county would give, again, to the state, which is a mistake. In 1956, I believe it was, the people in this county were tired of seeing their boys go to Sacramento to go to the National Guard Armory. So we all went to work and put together a plan where we got the state, we enticed the state to come here and build an armory on a piece of property we gave them for nothing. And should add some words in it. But, you know, we all know that the fairgrounds, I don't oppose a good housing project. I put a lot of them together, helped get them together, done a couple of these very kinds of grant projects. But we're talking about the fairgrounds, not a piece of dirt someplace over there or over there, but the fairgrounds. You know, the fairgrounds is surrounded by Placerville Drive, Armory Drive, Ray Lawyer Drive, the county property, and a shopping center. Pretty easy to define, pretty easy to defend if you're in law enforcement or some kind of regulation that is talking about keeping people in order. People can tell where its boundaries are, they're well marked. But in the middle of it, or in part of the middle of it, right off of Ray Lawyer Drive, sits this armory. Years ago, we tried to get it for the Boys and Girls Club. State said, "No dice, we can't give that up. It's a strategic part of the military of California." So we didn't give it up. So this facility just simply should be opposed. It would create a whole series of conflicts, insufficient parking, incompatible runoff, serious trespass, and likely incompatible noise receptors. So today, I heard somebody say that you don't have any control. Well, I've been in your shoes on behalf of the county and dealt with people who needed to get these grants. And you do have some control. And you need to tell them that there are better sites for this property than putting it inside the fairgrounds. Of course, maybe we could charge them a fee at the gate each time they went in and out, but I don't think they'd pay that. You're not going to get any fees that pay for any of the services that you provide in this county. None of the fees that you normally charge of a developer are you going to get. You're going to give them free bus tickets. I mean, the state's just tapping us out, and what the hell do they care? But I'm telling you, well, you think they're the big dog in the room, they're not. You may very well be. We have two opportunities. One is not to go along with this gift of public money to build this facility. Oppose it. Tell them, "We want your land back. We want it back for the fairgrounds." We're going to try and get the county not to give them the parcel that gives them access to Ray Lawyer Drive. Somebody says, "Well, how are they going to get it?" Well, they'll have to go into condemnation. When you go into condemnation, you have to prove your need. So I'll sit down and shut up, but please don't approve this. Oppose. Just tell them, "Not only do we not approve this, we oppose you doing this project on this site. I support good housing projects, but not this is the wrong site." Thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
Hello, my name's Scott Russell, born and raised here in Placerville. Kami Arnold and I are the promoters of Placerville Speedway. So I just wanted to talk on a, you know, few things with the Speedway and what we do out there. Our schedule usually is about 28 events a year. We usually get in about 25, depending on weather, or a fire camp or something like that that pops up or COVID. So we've been promoters since 2016. And addressing the parking situation, some of our events are, we already have parking issues. Some people say we may have outgrown what we're, you know, what we have over there. I don't look at that as being that. It's a handful of events a year that we have, you know, really large crowds and stuff like that. So with that being said, you know, I look at it as a fact of we're doing really good at what we're doing with our fair and some of our larger events that we hold over there. So with that being said, you know, like Armory Way, we make Armory Way a one-way street every Saturday night when we have a race. So if these residents are wanting to get to their home, they're going to have to wait in parking, the line for parking, to pay for parking, for them to get up to their residence because the street is ran as a one-way street. And then even after the event is over, you know, you come out of the tiered parking lot and you make a right up to Ray Lawyer Drive. So it's going to be a big issue with the events that are held there. So, you know, I look at the fairgrounds, you know, I'm up here probably speaking with a couple different hats, as a resident and as a person running the Speedway. Obviously, I will not be promoting that thing forever. There's going to be somebody after me, just like there was people before me. But with that being said, you know, I've used this fairgrounds for every level. All four of our kids went to 4H there. I've been there for weddings. I've been there for my dad's own memorial service. I've been there for the theater at Eldorado. I've been there. I mean, they have dog shows, they have horse events, they, everything. So I think, like everybody else is saying, I am for, I'm for affordable housing. I just think this is the wrong location for what is done at this fairgrounds and events that are being held there, and how I think over time it will eventually impact the residents, you know, in this proposed building. So the other thing I want to say real quick is that I have a touring series that goes to other fairgrounds. And there's fairgrounds disappearing all over our state, and it's not because of a track. It's because of, you know, things being built in around these fairgrounds. So the fairgrounds in Calistoga are leaving completely, not just the track. They want to put a resort in there or something else. Petaluma Speedway has about one more year, and it's not that they're just doing away with the Speedway, they're doing away with the whole fairgrounds because of everything building in around it. So we just look at this as the first step in the process of that maybe happening to our fairgrounds with this being built on this location. So this fairgrounds means more to me, I think, than a racetrack. We have another business in the community besides this. But, you know, this fairgrounds is one of the heavily-used fairgrounds in our state with all the different events that are held there. They probably do about 250 rentals a year at this fairground. So it's constantly being used for whatever, and there's constant traffic. And so I think there's just going to be a huge impact with this project and what we're already dealing with with parking and the flow of parking and what we do. And so I, you know, I recommend that, you know, you guys do not support this grant, and it's something else for them to figure out. Because I do feel we have a say-so instead of just throwing our hands up saying, you know, we have no say-so.
Thank you, Scott.
Thanks.
Just a reminder, please keep your comments to three minutes or less. I didn't look at the clock and realize that we went over quite a bit on that one. So just a friendly reminder.
My name's Kenny Short. I was born and raised here in California, in Placerville. 1964, I was born, and in 1965, the Speedway opened up. That enabled my family to come into the raceway and be part of the community. I've been going to that track since I was a baby. My mom tells me stories of coming in in a basket and watching the races for the first time, and my grandfather was involved in it, which gave him another opportunity for more jobs. Now I'm a small business owner in the community, and I've been able to kind of give back to the community and the racetrack and keep that sport going. You know, with people moving in around the area, you know, like we said, we all support, you know, housing. But when you push it into the, into a small base like that, you're only going to create more problems with the community and the surrounding businesses. Taking it away from me would be, you know, taking the money out of my pocket because, you know, I support the racetrack, and those people there at the racetrack come to my business. And without that business or without that Speedway there, you know, my business is going to suffer a little bit, you know. Keeping it, keeping it local is what we should do. We should find another place. And I do not support this at all. It would just hurt my feelings really bad because it's been in my life my whole time. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Kenny.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. My name is Denise Sweeney. I'm not speaking as a business owner, but as a lifetime resident of Eldorado County. Until about the fifth grade, my family lived above the Armory area, above the racetrack, above the fairgrounds. So as a former resident of that area, I question your thought process on the compatibility of 83 housing units in public service area being the fairgrounds, a community gem, something that involves our entire county, not just the city of Placerville. There's dust, there's noise, there's traffic issues, there's everything that goes on. My concern is that as a council, you are not listening to your constituency at large who does not really support this. Yes, we need affordable housing. We desperately need it. But we don't need it there. It's not going to serve a purpose, and perhaps will be instrumental in the demise of something that our community at large holds so dear, and that is the racetrack, and that is the fairgrounds. Something goes on there nearly every single weekend. As the city of council, or city of Placerville, you benefit by the sales tax revenues that are generated by every event that goes on there. As the city of Placerville, you benefit by all of the jobs, albeit temporary. There are still people coming in and spending money in your community, and you don't seem to be looking at that or listening to the questions that your community at large has about why you're accepting this. Yes, it's an easy answer, and it's an easy way to comply with what the state is demanding, but it does not represent what we, your constituency, we, your community, we, the people who you guys should be thinking about, want. It's just an easy yes answer to what the state wants. There are better locations that will serve your community better and serve your constituency better than taking the Armory and turning it into housing and eventually aiding into the destruction of our fairgrounds and our racetrack. You're going to hurt a lot more people than the 83 units that you might house people in. And I hope that you guys take that into consideration. I do not support this grant. It's the first step in the demise of something we all hold very dear, and I hope that you guys take that thought and what it will do to the rest of your community into consideration before you approve such a grant. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise.
Nicole Gottberg, Placerville resident. So I support writing a letter of support for an infrastructure grant for this project. I think having sidewalks and having gutters with this project is important. I think particularly with the parking concerns of what the state is doing with limited parking, we really do need to make sure that we have as much sidewalk as we possibly can going in along with this project, which is one of the things that this grant would support. So I'm very much in support of writing a letter in support of this. I'm also in support of affordable housing projects in general. I think people who work in Placerville need to be able to live here. I think it's having a big impact on our businesses. I know multiple businesses that cannot find staff, and they are having a hard time, and it's because of the lack of housing here in Placerville. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole.
Madam Mayor, once again, thanks for having me. My name is Mike Pettybone. You cut me short a minute last time, so I'll try to keep it to three. This project's completely, everything about it's wrong. Pierre knows this. He's been in the planning department here at the city long enough. It's been brought to your attention by some of your own, you know, people you appointed as building committee people. John List I'm speaking for tonight, briefly here, pointed out the fact the building's too tall, hook and ladder can't reach the roof. The capacity is well over the three-acre property can handle. And skateboards and bicycles and all the stuff Pierre's mentioning here sounds like a failed Walt Disney cartoon that just, it's not going to work. And you know that, and you're not going to trade in your car for a skateboard, and neither am I. I can't haul two-by-fours on a skateboard. So I would like to say, I have a million dollars invested in Placerville Drive. My building is right across the street from Armory Way. I'm not feeling really good about my investment when it comes to a project that overexceeds. And what I'd like to say is, to what Jack said, you do have the power, and you're falling for the gumdrops that lead us to a bad road. Your pin will be the first shot fired in this process. You have the right tonight to deny that or go along with the governor. The governor doesn't care about Placerville. I care about Placerville. So does everybody in this room. And if we let it go to the dogs, it's going to be a dog show. But there's other things. I'm working on a $6 million Culinary Arts Institute, and I think Pierre's familiar with this. If not, you will be. And there's so many more things that are productive than creating more low-income housing. We're promoting low-income housing. It's almost become a disease for our governor to say, "Hey, anywhere we can, I'm going to make my numbers look good because I'm running for president." That's not, not on my watch and not in my city. And by the way, I was a candidate for District Four Supervisor, and I didn't introduce myself as that. I'm glad that's one race I lost. I've won many other races in my life, but that's one I'm glad I lost. So I would just like to say, really consider this. And not only has it been brought to your attention, all the things wrong with the project, and if you are going to entertain this project, tone it down, bring it smaller. Adding sidewalks and skateboard to Armory Way is like putting lipstick on a pig. It's not going to matter. So I'm strongly opposed to this project. I'll join Brian Veerkamp and Jack Sweeney, and I'll see to it that we keep our racetrack over- over 83 people that ride a skateboard to Walmart. So, thank you for your time, and I hope you save your ink tonight, and do not sign this.
Thank you, Mike.
Hi, I'm Gabe Williard, and I'm on the Fair Board, and I'm not going to waste everybody's time by repeating everything because I agree with Jack and Brian Veer Camp and some of the other people that came up here opposing this project. The project is non-compatible at all with the fair and its interim uses, and I just want you to be aware of that, and please don't sign this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Affordable housing is a longstanding need in Placerville. And all of the people who've come up and said this is the wrong spot, okay, where is the better place? If you don't like this one, it's like, okay, complain if you want to, but if you complain without a solution to the problem, all it is is a complaint. So if this is the wrong place, I don't think it's an ideal place, where else? Where else do you want to put this project? I think four stories is too tall. I think not complying with the city's density ordinances is a problem. It's not the city's land, it's the state's land. So I don't know exactly how much influence we can have, but it seems to me like, okay, if you don't like this, where do you want to put it? We do need more affordable housing, so if not here, where?
Thank you, Sue.
Sue Taylor, I'm still scribbling my comments, but I just, you know, that brought a point. There's been 40 acres for sale right next to the other low-income housing that's right across the road on Ray Lawyer Drive that'd probably be a lot more appropriate for this type of project. But given that, this property should have gone back to the fairgrounds after the war effort, and your council should actually help facilitate the return of the property to the county. I hear this all the time, the state's making us do this. Every time I've heard it, I've actually gone to the state agency that's being referred to and asked them, are you doing this to our county? Are you doing this to our city? And most of the time they say, we can't do that. You have more power in your local jurisdiction than we do. We don't come in and stomp on our local jurisdictions. From what I've watched, I think the city's been facilitating this project. You can do something, and I would actually like to know the state representative that you're working on this project with and facilitating because I would like to find out what our other options are. I was at the economic development meeting, and you might correct me, Pierre, but I thought I heard you say that the city would be fast-tracking the plans for this project through the city process in our building department. You know, it's interesting, and I'm speaking not as representing the PDA, but this was before my time, the Downtown Association is no longer allowed to hold events downtown because I guess they stood up for protecting historical and cultural resources, which I think would be an issue the city... I know a lot of you ran on that issue, and it would be nice that you actually stood up for that issue. And so now the PDA is holding their events at the fairgrounds, and I really appreciate them, which is what this council wanted us to do. And now you're turning around and telling, you know, now you want to impact the fairgrounds. It doesn't make sense. So I would just say, go back to the state. I know you've been working with them from the beginning. I wouldn't, I don't even know if that's how this project came up in the first place, but go back and say, sorry, we made a mistake. After receiving more information provided by the county, we cannot support this project based on the following reasons. One of it, very significant, is the fairgrounds is culturally and historically significant to the people in this county. I mean, I can't even imagine sticking this right in the middle of the fairgrounds. It's against, and it's also against our nature to tear down historic buildings. I mean, you so loosely say they're going to first tear down the Quonset Hut for the Armory. I just, that just, it doesn't, and to do this with a negative declaration, which no one seemed to know about, I just, it doesn't pass the smell test, and you can do something. You can deny this, you can stand up for the community and say, now we understand that this is bigger than what we thought, and we want to support the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Doug Runkel. First of all, I was very disappointed to hear Madam Mayor, before this whole open forum started, already gave up. So I was going to talk, and then I said, no. A couple people asked me if I was going to talk. They said, don't let, go talk, go talk. And I said, you know what? I'm not going to give up. It's exactly what all of you should do. Don't give up. This fairgrounds is important to everybody in this county, one way, shape, or form. All of us, all of us here in this room, in this county, have been affected by that fairgrounds in a positive way. As we were kids, as we were grown-ups, your kids, whoever's, whatever it might be, okay? Do not give up. As Scott Russell said earlier, this is the first stage of the fairgrounds going away like others have. So please, fight, no matter how bad you think your hands are tied. Fight for this piece of property and the livelihood of that fairgrounds. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
I've lived in town for 40 years. Doesn't mean anything. I think you should do exactly what all these people are saying. I think you should fight. I think that you should demonstrate what exactly you're up against here. I think the idea that somehow, and the problem I have is, or the challenge I have, I like all these people. I love Jack Sweeney. He's one of my best friends. I really like him. I think that this is a losing battle. I've sat through enough SB 35 hearings at the Planning Commission to know what happens when the state of California writes the rules for you, and you don't have a lot of latitude as much as you might want to have latitude. I represent a county, Lassen County, they're one of my primary clients. They're closing a prison. They sued on CEQA. In the next budget year, the legislator changed the law so that CEQA no longer applies to the closure of prisons. Now, that doesn't mean you should give up, but I think everybody needs to know what they're up against here. I suggested before we started commenting that rather than make these people an enemy, you might want to make them your friends. If that thing gets built, give them some passes to the races. Let them see what goes on down there. My kids went down, used to go to the races when they were here and they were little, and even when they're adults, they go down there. I'm going to take my grandkids to the races next year. The idea that somehow this has to be a negative and not a positive, I don't think that has to be the case, but I think you should demonstrate to everybody exactly what you're up against, and you should have total transparency. Write the governor, write your legislator, find this person that Ms. Taylor was talking about so she can go talk to him because she always apparently gets a different answer than everybody else. And then if they give you different answers, bring that back here, and you could all commiserate, we can all commiserate on what's going on. I wouldn't write this letter. My guess is they'll probably get the grant without it, but I wouldn't write this letter. I would do exactly what all these folks are demanding, is that you fight this thing. My guess is that it won't change the outcome. I've seen enough of this stuff where the state just walks in and does what they want, and they are doing what they want, and it's terrible. They rewrite laws, they come in and do our planning for us, they make all sorts of decisions, and the idea that somehow if you rise up and say something to them that that'll change anything, it doesn't match the reality that I've had to deal with on the Planning Commission now for a year and a half, dealing with things in the county. The other thing, too, is, there is no good place for this. If you say, okay, fine, the Armory, and you have some magic powers, and you say, no, and we'll put it over there, well, you know what? People live over there, and there's businesses over there, and those people will be behind me talking to you about how they love the idea of affordable housing, but not exactly where they are. This is a constant in the universe, and I'm not blaming anybody because I'm not so sure I'd want it where I live. Anyway, good luck. Thank you. Ciao, ciao.
Thanks, John.
Denise Vifredo, thank you for having us. I'm a lifelong resident of El Dorado County and in Placerville, and I actually work with youth in our community. For six years, I ran the 4-H program for our county, and now I left the 4-H program and started a big Grange program out in Pleasant Valley where we have over 100 families that have joined. And talking with everybody, the fairgrounds is a hub of our community. It's a place that we congregate, we have fun, we cry, we have events. El Dorado County has so much to offer, but the fairgrounds is a place that we can go to to do all those things. And if you start taking that away, it makes it harder and harder for good Californians to stay. I've seen too many of my friends up and leave because of things like this. We do have a voice, and it's time for us to start using our voice and saying, you know what? We don't approve of this in our backyard. It starts with you guys. You are our first line of defense here. We aren't going to stop, even if you write the letter. I don't think you should write the letter. I think you should back your community, and you know what? Together, we're stronger. I don't think, we need to find a better place for this, the housing. I don't oppose housing. It's not my job or our job to find a suitable place. It's Jamboree or the state's to find a suitable. You know, the only reason that they're here, one, our emergency executive orders, blah, 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 and he can get away with whatever he wants? I'm sorry, but that's not, what are we telling the rest of our community? It's okay? Don't live up to the building standards? That's not acceptable. Why should he get away with it? It's time to say no. Let's take care of our community, let's take care of our youth in a place that we call home. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise.
All right, I see nobody else stepping up, so I will close public comment at this time and bring it back to the council. Anyone want?
That's a lot to digest. I'll always start it, reserve the right to say more later. Definitely a difficult issue. We have one side in tonight. We've had other sides to support it, so I wouldn't say that this is all against this. I think we've had a lot of support for this project also. Things that trouble me, talking about the Armory, is I didn't hear anybody talking about what they specifically do at the Armory at the fairgrounds, how that makes it an essential use. I heard a lot of people talking about the fairgrounds going away, and I just don't see that. You have a housing project right across Ray Lawyer that hasn't destroyed the fairgrounds. So I'm a little troubled with some of that. Interesting comments regarding, we should support the state giving this back to the county. The irony that the county did not support the city when it had a building in the city it no longer used, giving it back to the city instead went outside. Just kind of interesting arguments that you don't support the city, but then you want our support for other things. I'm troubled by all these things. I also see some opportunities here. You know, we talked about runoff issues that are there whether we have the project or not. I mean, these are things that we can ask to be addressed, that we can perhaps get fixed in our community. We can add, you know, and I would imagine there'd be some sort of disclosure anyways to people when you rent, that there's a Speedway, that there's a fairgrounds. You know, this idea that you're not going to have those things. I live below an airport, I live above the park, I live in a city. You know, there's a lot of noise. That doesn't go away. The right location, the right location in the city of Placerville, which has very limited areas left, we're very built out, yet we have a lot of businesses closed on Main Street because they can't get workers. I mean, these are things that are real problems in our community that need to be solved. I'm going to let someone else talk for a while.
I'll chime in here a bit. I'm a lifelong resident, and I think it makes a difference hearing from people that have been here a long time. All the families that have used the fairgrounds for a variety of different reasons through the years and have had meaningful experiences and lifelong memories were created there. I don't see that going away. I don't see this project killing that. I don't see it diminishing the fairgrounds. But I also don't appreciate the state doing what they're doing, ignoring our local rules, our local ordinances for... I got a question real quick for the fire chief. Do we have a ladder that can reach that?
Our current ladder truck, ladder 26, is 110-foot aerial, and our new ladder truck that's on order is 107-foot aerial.
What's that mean?
Is that yes or no?
A typical four-story building would be about 40, 40, 50 feet tall, so yes.
Okay, so, I hear a lot of people, I get a little bummed because people throw out stuff that is, you know, all these grand statements that's going to ruin this, that's going to wreck this, and really, you know, I've heard that a lot in all the different projects we've done in town over the years, whether I've been on the council or not, and I've never seen any of their predictions, these dire predictions, come to fruition. And I just, it's unfortunate that we go to that level to have a meaningful conversation about something like this. I don't get it. One of the issues I have is workforce housing. And I have, we, the county is battling trying to get workforce housing into place. The city is trying to get workforce housing. We have a lot of people, our kids cannot live here. They're having to leave this town because they don't have a place to, they can't afford it, they don't have a place to go. And yet, we have this situation where it's really perplexing to me because I value so much our heritage, our history that we have with this location, and then it causes me such consternation to have the state show up and ignore who we are and what's important to us in this town and do whatever they want by their rulings. So, I, you know, I think there's middle places here. I don't think it's, I don't think it's going to destroy our racetrack. They will have to deal with it. I mean, that's going to be on them if this were to go through. I don't, I'm not a big fan of this, you know, I, but at the same time, I would like to see everybody, if by some, if we can wave that magical wand and make this go away, I'd like to see this community step up and find solutions, work together to find solutions to help this community develop workforce housing. Because it is a missing part of the city and the county, and the county is struggling just as much as the city is to produce this type of housing for our community, for our kids. And if all you that complain as much about this one situation also put your effort into supporting this community and doing things to bring it together and provide some of these locations, whatever it is, the 40 acres, there's places out there. We can do that. But, you know, it's disappointing that it's only at the final moment that most people come up and complain when we really probably should be building a broader network to help support situations like that.
Thank you, Dennis.
So, we have, what, about 5.86 acres within the city of Placerville. You know, to some folks that have spoken before, square miles. There's not a lot of room. There's not a lot of room. I think everyone's mentioned that. There's not a lot of areas that's not built out in the city of Placerville. So the question of where else, it always is a question. I, I mean, I love the comments of, it's great, I love, I support affordable housing, but this isn't the location. I hear that at the county, I hear that at, at, at the city. In fact, most housing projects that come up, this is what I normally hear. We support housing, but just not here. So I'm not sure where that here actually location is. Is it invisible? Is it in the sky? Because at some point, we do have to actually put, you know, houses in the ground for people to live. And so, you know, this is one option. This has been, this particular one's been going on for about a year, that I think it's been coming in front of the city council. This is the third time that it's been in front of us. As council member No said, we, you know, we've had support for it, it's certainly been here. And, you know, we've, we've taken those comments back as well. So again, it's sort of the, the last push to try to stop something that's been going on for over a year. I support this project, I think. You know, we need more affordable housing in the city of Placerville. As the mayor said, this falls about within the 67,000 median income range. I'm not sure what people think, or who's going to live there, but 67,000, you know, that's the servers, also the people that we see and work with every day. And they don't have housing, or they're living, they're sharing housing, or they're still living at home. You know, let's give people opportunities to live. I mean, in terms of the parking, the state's going to more minimum parking restrictions already. There's been multiple pieces of legislation that have already passed, there's in transit corridors. We're going to get to the point, and this is at SAICOG, Brian knows this, you know, there's been pushes for minimum parking, for lessening of minimum parking standards for quite a while, and that's going to continue. That's not going to change as we move to more transit-oriented future. And so, that's, that is what it is. That's, that's not going anywhere. Now, all that being said, we still should work with the state about height requirements, about trying to get some more house, some more parking in there. I do think that's something that's worthy of the city's time and effort to do, so that we try to get the best project available that fits within there. I don't believe it's going to shut down the, 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 I mean, if, if, who's going to shut down the fair? The state can't shut it down. It's not a state fair, for one. They don't make the appointments to the state fair board of directors. Other state fairs have that, but this is not a state fair. It's a joint county and, and the fair board. The, the fair board's sort of quasi-autonomous, which is interesting. So, that part's not going to go away unless the county and the fair board wanted to solve themselves. So unless that happens, I don't see the fair going anywhere. I know I certainly would never support that, so I don't see it going anywhere. So I, I do think that this letter makes sense, so that we have the frontage upgrades that we need for it. And so, I would make a motion to move this letter forward and to support it.
Does anyone want to second that motion? I do want to make some comments, but I can, I'm happy to make them. Okay. I appreciate the comments that my colleagues have made so far, and, you know, if it, if it came off and I gave the impression that I had given up on fighting for the fair, you know, I have long supported adding affordable housing to Placerville. So, and I have supported this project in the past. So, you know, just, I'll put that out there. I want to say that I have the utmost respect for the fair and for all the speakers that came tonight, and I really do appreciate the passion here. I also do not agree that having apartments in this location is going to kill the fair or the speed track. I think that that is an assumption that is being made that is not necessarily factual. There are some real valid concerns that have come up, and I, I have my concerns with how this is being handled by the state. I think that there is a role for the city to play when it comes to advocating for the city's needs. And there was a list of things that came up in return, in terms of trees on site, stormwater, parking, the lack of responsiveness that they've shown the community. And I would like to address this with the state and Jamboree and make sure that they are aware of the concerns and, you know, if there's any modifications that can be made to improve the project. But, you know, as, as has been mentioned by my colleagues up here, we get a lot of suggestions for a better place. This was surplus property. So it was owned by an owner that did not need it, they didn't need to buy it, and that's basically the only way to get affordable housing projects built quickly. If you're talking about any vacant lot that needs, someone needs to buy, and more money needs to be raised, it's, it is incredibly difficult, and there is always opposition to projects. And especially, you know, in these affordable housing projects. And this is a real dire, critical need in our community. As has been mentioned, our businesses struggle to find employees. I know when I had the restaurant, we couldn't find employees, and that was years ago. This, this shortage of housing for the missing middle, for people that are, you know, single, making 30, $40,000 a year, it is very tough. And we all wear different hats here. You know, many of the speakers here were representing the fair, and I, I appreciate you advocating for, for the best interest of the fair. We are representing the city residents that live within this six square miles, that's the hat that we're wearing up here. And they need a place to live, like, we want families to be able to stay together, we want children that grew up here to be able to find housing here. And this is a priority for the state. It's not, it's not an easy decision, there, there is probably no perfect place, and I, I really do respect those that came out to speak on this and your concerns. But I'm, I'm in support of sending a letter.
I'd like to second the motion with the addition, though, that we address some of these concerns regarding the water runoff issues, and people are saying they're not getting answers to their questions, that those need to be addressed, so I would just...
I would accept those amendments. Yep.
I don't, I don't think we'll get their attention by, by giving them what they want and then asking them to do something that they have already pretty much indicated they're not going to do anyway. I just, I just, I just don't think that that's a, an effective way of communicating with the state.
Okay. Where did Patty go? Yeah, where did our fifth council member go?
I, I did consult with council member Borelli. She has property that's located in proximate location, so she's recusing herself from any participation.
Okay. All right. Well, we have a first and a second. Dennis, do you want to make any further comments?
I, I think, I think it's a, I, I'm supportive of workforce housing, and both Wendy and I have worked hard to find common ground with places to do workforce housing, and yet, I just don't feel that the state is, is respecting the city in what they're, and how they're treating us and what they're doing. And, and I don't see, by sending this letter, we're sending them the message that it's okay. And, and I, I just, I can't go along with that.
I would just say, I would just add one more thing. It's like, you know, this letter is going to go into a file of an AGPA at the state of California. If we want to go fight and talk about doing other things at the state, we can call Brian Dolly, we can call Frank Bigelow, we can go talk to the deputy director, we can go talk to the DGS director. But I don't see this as being mutually exclusive. I mean, this letter is going to go into a file of whoever AGPA is handling this particular thing. It isn't going to, that person isn't, we got to go talk to someone way above that level if we're going to get anything changed. So I don't see it as being, I, I think you can have a parallel path, because that ultimately isn't going to be the person deciding what's happening here.
All right. That's a good point. Dennis, would you, do you have any friendly amendments that would make you feel more comfortable with it, or just no?
I would say until they, we, we won't support anything until they start addressing the issues that we have. Whether it's the density of the project, or that also relates to parking, I'm sure we could do it in a much smaller footprint, not so much density. I think that there's a lot of issue. I, I know the fair people would really just like to have the property.
Right.
Right? And so, but the state doesn't seem to be going in that direction.
Okay.
So far. I just don't think we should support it at this point in time until the state actually starts having meaningful conversations with us.
I don't, I don't remember that our last council meeting, that those issues were brought up and, and were a concern, so I'm a little confused.
Oh, they were. They were.
Okay.
By, by, a lot of people as well as myself.
Quick question. Rebecca, in terms of the, say, one, one issue that's come up is this stormwater runoff. Can you speak on that and how this grant application to support the infrastructure would address or not address those concerns?
So, all improvement projects, regardless of jurisdiction, usually have to design to a set of standards that includes at minimum a 10-year storm with hydraulic considerations for 50-year storm and up to 100-year storm. I would imagine that the developer and their engineer is actually going forward and doing those design requirements. To speak on some drainage issues within that area, the Armory, you know, has its own drainage challenges in the nearby vicinity, but the Fairgrounds has theirs as well. You know, they're just, the topography, they're just a lower elevation than the surrounding areas, and so that does present some pretty decent drainage complications. The Fairgrounds has been doing an excellent job pursuing infrastructure improvements on their site. And with that being said, you know, if there's, they, the, the Armory project would be required to have their pre-development flow, or post-development flow match their pre-development flow. So whatever the flow is coming in now needs to not be increased by the development of this project. And there's a whole host of ways that they will be required to do that, as well as some of the, some of the state's own requirements for storm drain, conveyance, and treatment on-site, too. So, in accordance with like RMS4 permit. Did that answer your questions?
Yes. So, in your expert opinion, this project is not going to contribute further to fair?
Should not.
Okay. All right. We have a first and a second. Go ahead and take the, take the vote on this.
Council member Borelli will be noted as recused. Council member No?
Aye.
Council member Thomas?
No.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
All right, what are we having to?
Shuffling papers here, but... All right, we are going to move on to...
Is that yours?
Oh, my God.
Oh, wait, here, here you go.
All right. We are going to move on to item 13. This is council reports from other agency meetings. Good night. Thank you all for coming. I really do appreciate the comments. All right, 15-point, or sorry, 13. So Eldorado County Transit Authority, we will be meeting next week.
I'm sorry? To the last meeting for Eldorado Transit?
It's, we're meeting next week, it hasn't happened since the last council meeting. Okay. Eldorado County Transportation Commission, meeting next week.
Next week.
LAPCO's meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
I met with the budget, the special budget committee for LAPCO.
All right. SAICOG?
We did meet. Not necessarily items that were at the meeting, but they've come, come to be, so we have 30 million in Green Means Go dollars for pre-funding, for planning, for green zones that will be, you know, go out throughout the SAICOG regions. And then, we also got 45.5 million in ATP funds, which is a huge increase, because we had 17.3 million in ATP funds last fiscal year, so quite a, quite a jump there. So some opportunities for, certainly for our jurisdiction, for Eldorado County, you know, from that. And then we also got a $5 million raise grant, which is in conjunction with EDCTC and PCTPA, which is really a grant that's focused on zero emissions and really some shared transportation amongst the three regions. So, pretty good news for our, for our area.
Great. Pioneer?
We haven't met.
Okay. Placerville Fire Safety Council?
Ongoing for, and we're planning, you know, next year's activities and, well, actually no, this year's activities. And I, all the, the information that, and the things that we passed tonight for helping with the fire suppression is going to be welcome news.
All right. Counting two by two, did not meet. And Opportunity Knox, COC?
Uh, we, no meeting.
All right. Item 14, or actually, I'll see, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on item 13? Seeing none. I will move on to item 14, request for future agenda items. None. 15, this is to acknowledge and file the HDL sales tax report. And Mr. Warren?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So we have another positive report for you. This is for the quarter ended March 31st, 2022. And your Bradley Burn sales tax, which is your general fund sales tax that pays for police services, parks and rec, and other services, increased on the cash basis by 10.7% or $154,990. It did include back taxes, and so when you remove the back taxes, the increase was actually $135,318.94, still much higher than the 3.1% we budgeted, about three times that. So, the increase is about $90,000 than what we budgeted for fiscal year 21, 22 in that quarter. The 9.4% compares to Eldorado County, 11%, they actually did slightly better, and then the state, 17.1%. So usually it's the other way around, we perform better, but this time, the county and state got us, so. And then on your top 25 sales tax producers, which we appreciate all of our businesses, especially our top 25, we did have Broadway Smoke Shop added, Haintown Fuel Stop, which is at 1312 Broadway, and Save Mart, and Big Lots, Jerry's Automotive Paint and Supply, and Sierra Nevada Tire and Wheel dropped out. So they're still large producers, they're just not in the top 25. And then, your Measure J and L sales tax increased by 31% on the cash basis. When you remove the back taxes from prior quarters, it ended up being 25%, which is phenomenal. So, that's it, unless you have any questions.
All right. Questions for Dave? Thank you for this report. Good news. It's always, it's always nice to see more money than we budgeted for.
Exactly. You don't see that very often, do you?
We always back out the, the back taxes.
Yes.
But you, you never add them in somewhere else. And so it seems like we're always backing them out, but it should, it seems like it should add to something. And, you know, I mean, you average them out, it seems like it gives us a bump on every one of these numbers, and, a realistic bump, instead of...
Right.
It's, it's just, I'm just, you know, because we never go back and attribute that to the, well, back in whatever.
And sometimes it could be two, three, four quarters back. So it, you know, far exceeds the fiscal year.
But on average, we get a fair amount of back tax every...
We do, and mostly because we have HDL really watching our sales tax closely, as well as the state board of, well, not board of equalization anymore, but the state Department of Tax and Fee Administration.
Okay.
Yep. Just... Dave, any warning signs? I saw that, so tax receipts are down 1.2 billion. It's the first time in quite a while that the tax receipts for the state were down. Any warning signs for us as we move along here?
Yeah, I am concerned, I, well, I'm happy gas prices are dropping, but what that means is our base for sales tax is also going to shrink. So we need to watch that, as well as, the other sectors are doing okay. You know, online sales tax has kind of flattened out as people came back to brick and mortar. But the big thing is, is that anything that's been inflated that's taxable because of the last, because of the pandemic and other pressures, I'm hoping that we'll enter into a more normal period. However, that means our tax base is going to shrink. And again, your budget this year for fiscal year 22, 23, we took a practical approach and didn't count on all of the new money that we forecasted on ongoing expenses. A little less than half was actually set aside for one-time uses because of this, because we knew our tax base was probably going to shrink over the next 12 months. we knew our tax base was probably going to shrink over the next 12 months. Thank you, Dave.
Dave, if I can, just one, if you want to look at the very last couple of pages, talks about sales tax trends and shows what they're projecting, and you do see that '22 and '23 looks like it could be a little bit less of an increase than what we've seen the last two years, based on what they're currently projecting, so.
That's correct.
Any other questions, comments? Would anyone in the public like to speak on this? Nope? All right. Upcoming agenda items? Thank you, Dave. I always, I always like seeing that report. Upcoming agenda items? We have a dig once ordinance, Hangtown Creek covert, Cottonwood 4 and 6, Placerville Drive, environmental document, and several other items that people can read at home in their leisure. That brings us to item 17, adjournment, and it is 8:19, and so I will adjourn this meeting at this time. Hope everyone has a great night. Thank you.
Good night.